Two.
Recording in progress.
All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Scioto Township Planning Commission's special meeting on September 29th at 7:00 PM. And with that, I'll ask people to stand for the Pledge of Leadership.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation under the umbrella of the Constitution of this law.
Secretary Chang, roll call, please.
Hey, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Sharmah. Commissioner Hume.
Present.
Commissioner Hyde.
Present.
Commissioner Chang, present. Commissioner Culverton.
Present.
Liam Quarum.
All right, then we'll move with the adoption of the agenda. Is there anyone that wants to add or change the agenda as posted?
Move the adoption of these agendas provided.
Moved by Moore, supported by Hyde. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Then, this evening, we're moving to public comment. And we do not have any public hearing this evening, so this is the only opportunity for the public to address the Planning Commission. So if you'd like to address us during public comment is your opportunity to do so. And those who wish to address the Planning Commission on matters, or it could be any information, or Heritage Woods this evening, or anything else, your opportunity is to do that now, and it's limited to three minutes unless you're speaking for a group. And so with that, I will open public comment. Please come up and sign in. We'll do those who are present in the township call first, and then we'll move to the online folks.
Davis, Davis Spicer, 525 Baker Road. My question is, why is this a special meeting? Why is it waiting until the regular meeting?
Yeah, I can answer that. We want, there were two holidays where we weren't meeting. And it is up to a, if a petitioner wants to request a special meeting, they also pay for that special meeting. And so that was requested by the applicant. And so that is why we have a special meeting.
I live right on the edge, you know, borders up to this here. I'm just curious, is that, do we get notified? Are we supposed to get notified if we have a special meeting or something? Or does it matter? I mean, how do I find out that there's a meeting?
Yeah. I think after, it's only, there's only notification of public hearings, you know, and that's sort of our standard practice. So I'm glad you're here.
So then how do I find out about it? Though, I mean, I found out through the grapevine. I mean, how do I, do I have to call the township every day?
It's, all of our agendas and so forth are posted online. And that's our primary means of communication.
But you could also call.
So then, so then I need to go online every day and find out if there's a meeting or not?
The meetings are typically posted, and as the agenda is posted, you can go in and link the agenda. But you're also welcome to always, you know, you can, you can call the township or.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, so I need to call, I mean, how many days in advance does it happen?
What we try and do is do, post the agenda a week before the meeting. Oftentimes, the packet is not complete until a couple of days before the.
So if I tried every, if I was to call every Monday morning, or find out every Monday morning, I can find out if there's a meeting or not?
If you need to call. Typically, yeah, there are.
So our regular meetings are the second and the fourth Monday of every month.
Correct.
It's the special meetings that you're focusing on, right?
Yeah, that's what I'm curious.
So yeah, you would need to call.
Okay, all right.
Or look on the website, because those are, they're posted, they are listed. Of all the meetings in the township are listed on the website.
Oh, I guess myself, when I'm not.
Yeah.
I'm a construction gal, so I never really had any computer, so.
Yeah, gotcha.
And my phone's so tiny, it's sort of hard to read on. So I just, I'll just.
So I'm glad you're here.
I'll just call, I'll call the township then, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Randy Raeford. I live at 7760 Berg Street in Dexter. And I believe it was last fall, I spoke before this body about the applicant not having consent from the property owners to the South in order to go forward with this application. And then your packet tonight is the meeting minutes from the Zoom meeting, in which MDOT was part of that Zoom meeting. And Mr. Heidelberg notes right in there that there needs to be an executed easement agreement and road maintenance agreement in order for MDOT to even consider this application. I spoke again with Mr. Heidelberg today, and at some point, it was intimated that, well, the developer could just donate that property to MDOT and kind of circumvent the need to get the property owners' approval on this project. That is not the case. There must be an executed easement agreement between the developer and these property owners to the South. That's period. And so I don't know why this board is bringing up these meetings and considering this application, when that should have been one of the first hurdles that was taken. The developer has all the means and none of the willingness to get an agreement with these property owners, and yet the application still goes forward. And I would just like to, you know, it may have been missed at the beginning. But again, I brought it to light last fall. I'm bringing it to light again this evening. And I would ask this body to postpone any action on this application until said agreement is in your hands. And that's all I have for you tonight, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Eugene Peck. I live at 609 Baker. I, that's the property that's directly to the south of Boulevard. I've been in front of this board a few different times. Nice to see you. I have properties that share 2,000 feet with a development footprint. You'll have to excuse me, this getting up in front of you people, it gets me a little nervous, and I'm not used to this, especially.
I'll pull my mask down.
Yeah, you're okay, appreciate that. Now, it makes me feel good. So that, as Randy mentioned, the basic ingredient for the project to move forward should be all the neighbors in agreement with the Boulevard agreement. And we're not. It's a one-sided thing. The last one I took a look at, as Randy had mentioned, showed the private property as it stands now being donated to MDOT, and MDOT using that for our right-of-way and our turnaround and everything that we need. And it looked doable, other than they don't want anything to do with that. And it's about as unethical as you could possibly get. Mr. Luan, you, this board has tabled this three or four, three times at least, and it was moved on to the Basic Board of Trustees. And when it was looked at then, Mr. Luan had mentioned, by theory, that we should be able to have an agreement with the developer. It just, it doesn't appear as that's going to happen. We're just too far apart on our specifics. There's no such thing as a theory to pursue a legal agreement and changes to the legal description of our properties. This is very imminent, and we believe the property value is lowered by anywhere from 10% to 40% in doing this as a residential, if not hurting a commercial because of how you have to access the property. Because the meeting was scheduled on such short notice, not all of our legal council could be here. This meeting doesn't follow a typical protocol, but you'd mentioned on there was a holiday of some sort. But I don't believe this was on the website at Monday morning. I don't believe this was on there. Maybe it was, I possibly could have overlooked it, but I think I would have caught that. Do you recall it being on there? Or was?
I don't know.
I believe so.
So we all knew about it, but not the public?
Pretty much, but because it's something that affects me so drastically and directly, I would have thought that I probably would have been notified, kind of the little put-off that I wasn't glad to make it here to see what's going to happen. This is a final approval from the Planning Commission, isn't it?
It is a submittal for the final site plan approval. So it's a submittal, they submitted it, and there's a whole review process. And so we have the option of acting on it tonight or not acting on it tonight. So it's not, it's not that we have to approve or disapprove the applicant tonight.
Jan, the meeting has been posted online for about two weeks now, and the agenda was posted Monday morning.
Okay.
Thank you.
Missed that. Because of being forced to defend my property, I really hadn't had a chance to put it in, but as far as borders, or fences, or property divisions, it just seemed like this whole thing has gone so fast, and all I've been, had to do is basically concentrate on the maintenance of the Boulevard, because that was basically my main leg to stand on. And everything from giving property for an easement, a loon, if you will, to, you know, there's a reason there's 500 and some pages with this, because everything's been thrown at it, and this is the last possible avenue to get this thing in. And again, that's, like I say, I share 2,000 feet of this, and I, you know, so I have a pretty vested interest in this. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who would like to address the Planning Commission tonight? And I want to just remind folks that because there isn't a public hearing, we had our public hearing at the preliminary stage. This is the public's only opportunity to address the Planning Commission this evening. So if you'd like to address us, please come forward.
So we don't have a hearing on the final PUD submittal?
No, just on the.
The township board.
Yeah.
So from here, if it were approved, should we go before the board as a public?
Yeah, and this is a recommending body as opposed to an approving body?
Well, we understand this, but it should be followed protocol and the Board of Trustees.
Yep.
Yep. All right, is there anyone else that's present before I move online? Right. We have folks online.
Well, we have a number of participants, 13 participants, actually. And I'd like to mention to those folks online that our format's a little different tonight. This is set up as a regular Zoom meeting and not a webinar. So pretty much everybody's on. I think I've muted everyone. But if you would like to participate, public participation part of the meeting, please raise your virtual hand, and I will unmute you. And I see a few hands up right now, and let's start with the first one, and that is Pam Boyd. I'm asking you to unmute Boyd, so you have the floor for free votes.
Thank you, Doug. Pam Boyd, a Scioto resident. On page nine of the packet, in particular, it's talking about Heritage Woods Senior Adult Living Facility? I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Home of the Aged, haven't heard that in a long time, Memory Care. 12 single rooms, three double rooms, 18 beds. I'm not a doctor, but I am the daughter of a mother and a grandmother who had dementia. And I noticed in looking, trying to look at the map and the layout, it has two issues that I found to be very valuable with my own mother's care. That when you have double rooms, these patients at certain points during the day have Sundowner Syndrome at night, and they can get challenging, as in, they're very disruptive to other patients. And the places that I had my mother in, they had single rooms. There were no double rooms. And the other thing is, is there a location in, on the property outside as well as inside where the memory care patients can pace? Memory care patients, when their brains don't work function, their bodies still do, and they need to walk. And it is very critical to have space to walk. And I don't, I don't see any of that. So I'm pointing it out, maybe it'll show up in another, another meeting or diagrams, but I wasn't seeing that in the diagrams that I looked at. Thank you very much.
And thank you, Pam. Just a comment, Home for the Age is, I agree, it's an archaic kind of term, but it is the term that the licensing, the state of Michigan licensing uses for that type of, for assisted living, skilled nursing, but Home for the Age is a licensing terminology. Very antiquated.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we have, next hand up is Jillian Carey. Jillian, if you could unmute yourself, you'd have the floor.
Good evening. There's a, there's a little bit of feedback. I don't know, somebody may have their Zoom on in the meeting hall. So regarding Heritage Woods, looking through, it's a large, large file, and I have been to many of the meetings going back even before COVID pandemic. Yes, the Planning Commission is the recommending body, that's true. And then, then after the plans are not approved, but you recommend it to move forward to the Board of Trustees. As we know, the Board of Trustees is going through a lot of changes, and we have a new member that has been appointed, has not attended yet. We have another one that's on his way out. And then, well, some of the other ones are, you know, having some issues, to say that in a lightweight. So regarding the plans for Heritage and for any other plan that comes in front of you, it should be that going through all the details, and if there's, if there's issues between residents and the developer, or whatever issues that need to be taken care of, they should be taken care of before this is approved and goes to the Board of Trustees. Or, excuse me, before you sign off to have it go to the Board of Trustees, because you don't approve of the plans. But just knowing a little bit about, in driving in that area, regarding this Boulevard and MDOT being involved, and agreements with residents, this is one of the problems that we have in Scioto Township, is that, you know, any residents that are close to a development or whatever the project is, they, a lot of times, they feel left out. So please, work with, help these, help the residents here and the developers get everything set, get everything, I'm going to say approved in quotations, before you send it to the board, just to make it easier. And we don't want them to approve something that they don't really know about, and then it ends up harming our community and potential lawsuits down the road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have Rick Lawson from the Heritage Watership Council. Not sure if, do you want to go in later, Jan, or?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, as we went through the reports.
Okay, so Rick, we'll call on you later as a kind of an outside agency reviewer. And then our next hand up is Rob Pattinson. So Rob, you have the floor. Just unmute yourself. Yeah, but we, we're going to come back to them later.
Can we see the flyer picture? The flyer picture?
Nobody else's hands up, Rob, so go ahead.
Thank you.
There are no other virtual hands up?
I do a hand up?
Yeah, I think we have another hand up in the.
Need to address their very last one? My family still lives right next to it.
Well, you know what?
So Jeff Smith, like the Smiths that are on 777 Marshall Road. So we will retain the front part of the property. My uncle lives on the corner of the property. We live around the property, so, so we do have to see it every day.
Do sign in.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, thank you very much for sharing that. Old-fashioned stuff. So, do we have anyone else online or present?
There are no other virtual hands up.
Then I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment. Moved by Commissioner Hyde, support. Commissioner Hume. Any further discussions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, public comment is closed at 7:22. Right? We'll then move to communications and correspondence.
Then Chair, would you consider moving? I wonder if it would be appropriate to move this Heritage Woods agenda above communications and.
You mean, yeah, we don't have any public hearings. Communications is just a check-in of if anyone else has received any other communications. So it's a quick one, so.
But we'll be moving to it.
Yeah. Any communications other than? Because we did, I think the, all of the Eagle communication was in the packet. Okay, great. All right, then we'll move on to new business. Possible action, OAPUD number 22006, SP number 2211, Heritage Woods. It's a new PUD. And the way that the agenda will work is, we'll hear a presentation by the applicant, and then move to our planning reviewer, our engineering reviewer. Huron River Watership Council has some comments and questions on the wastewater treatment plan, and then Commissioner kind of questions and so forth.
I would say Attorney Fink is also.
Okay, and I know there are some questions about the easement rights and so forth, and so we also have the, our attorney here, too.
Was MDOT invited to this meeting?
I don't think MDOT was invited to the meeting.
Would it be Morton? That would be unusual to invite an outside agency. You just named several other outside agencies.
These are all contracted reviewers, and Huron River Watership Council is a kind of consultant on the water quality piece for the wastewater treatment facility. So they're kind of consultants of the township. And typically, we'll get correspondence from state agencies, like we did from Eagle, and correspondence from the Road Commission, and the Road, because the Road Commission typically doesn't attend our meetings either. That helps. So we'll move forward with the applicant's presentation. And we do have a new Planning Commissioner, so it might be helpful to have a business Commissioner Hume. So, you know, just kind of take that into the context.
And Chair Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to lead her on Thursday night, which I know is unusual for me. Appreciate that. So my name is Daniel Johnson. We have the Smith family representatives here with us. We've already met Jeff, but Jerry and Mom are also with us. And we have several team members with us, two and two here at the meeting, present. Joe Maynard from Washington Engineering, who is kind of here all the time. And Matthew Van Sweeten from Forsight Management, their sustainability consultant. Online, we have Ted Erickson from IMEG. He's attending by Zoom. He is the engineer for the Community Wastewater Utility System. We have John Schnar from Universal Design, he's attending by Zoom. He is the architect for the senior living facility. And we have Heath Ryder for Trilogy Health Services Online. He is representative for the owner and operator. So since we last presented to the Planning Commission last February, there's been a couple small updates to the project that we wanted to brief you on, which are contained in your package. And then to summarize kind of conditions of approval. Part parcel of approval. So we have, on Zoom, we have Ted Erickson from IMEG.
Where's your, like, what kind of your, as opposed to you wanting to chair, right?
Yes.
Maybe raise your hand. Okay. And I'm sorry, who's from IMEG? Ted?
Ted Erickson.
Erickson.
He's been handling all the application deals for Eagle.
I'm sorry, I know you said, what is your name, sir?
My name, Daniel Johnson. We've met before.
Yeah, and you may need to make sure your mic's muted. While we're waiting, Doug, is there a way that the Planning Commission could request that the Mr. Spicer and Mr. Pett are another side of meetings? Is there a way that we could do that specially, or?
You could, but that.
I mean, it's not. A president kind of thing.
I guess it'd be.
So Doug, it says on the meeting host will let you win.
I think I have to promote the host or something?
I think you just have to, as long as they can.
They'll try, because I, everyone can share screens, so maybe.
So once again, Heritage Woods Village, it's a planned senior residential community, which we talked about before, and the need for that with respect to aging population and then longer.
Excuse me, you can speak just a little bit louder, because it's harder for, you know, with minutes projecting this way for everyone here.
Give me a second. So just to give you a quick overview of the meetings that we've been through with respect to this project, just highlighting the February meeting that, where this body granted approval for the project, and then in May of 2022, where the board granted unanimous approval for the project. Terms of the final.
Except for me.
No, this was.
Oh, the BOT.
Yeah, Board of Trustees. So with respect to a final PUD process, which I would think is outlined in your consultants' review letters, there's, you know, basically it's focused on the technical. So within the package that is sitting there, which is a large package, which you've seen online, roughly 65% of it is focused on engineering, civil engineering, roads, profiles, utilities, et cetera. About 15% is landscape, 11% is architectural, 5% is site writing, 4% is site signage. So just to give you a sort of proportional feeling for what the package contains. As an overview, again, to repeat, you know, a little bit of what we talked about at our preliminary PUD process, this kind of gives you in a point and image sort of the various components of the project and where they're located on the site. Basically, the ranch villas, which is a component that's focused on leasing, available for lease. You've got ranch duplex units, which is a for sale product. And then the senior living facility, which is kind of the heart of the project with respect to assisted living, assisted living services. Small clubhouse or community buildings on the site. We have future solar farm planned and some other site hardscape improvements we're focused on. So from updates with respect to preliminary to the final, by and large, the project is essentially the same with the exception of the senior living facility. So the project reduced from 120 bedroom units to 117 beds and 105 rooms. So it's smaller from a count standpoint. Square footage wise, it reduced from 178 for 20 to 81 for 50, much smaller. Part and parcel of that is the modified building footprint and site orientation, which are good in terms of, as far as the height of the facility, prior proposal was a maximum of three stories. This proposal is a maximum of two stories, a combination of one and two, which is the max. And then there's a small maintenance building that was added to facilitate maintenance operations.
Just a reminder that.
Pick it up.
Yeah, the volume up.
So here's the site plan. Basically, it's the same as the last time. The only difference is the senior living facility essentially, which you see sort of in the middle of the, of the middle of the image, and it's clear where that is.
So could you summarize the total number of units then, from what it was to what it is now?
Okay, so the, in terms of all the components, yeah, the duplex, the duplex units are 82. That's as it was before and as it is now. The villa units are 149, I believe.
What do you call them?
149, the duplex, I'm sorry, the villa units, villa units for lease, 149. That's as it was before, as it is now. And then the senior living facility is 117 beds.
And at 105 rooms.
Right, there are some shared rooms. And we can get into some detailed questions on that with Mr., gentleman from Trilogy, Mr. Ryder. I'll run through some details on that. So once again, we zoomed in on this because that's the component that really changed, was the main difference from the prior proposal. Here you see an image of the main entrance, which is essentially assisted living. It's on the south side of the facility. And then on the north side is the entrance for the health administration and the memory care component of the project. Here, the plan is rotated, so north is to the, is to the left in this case, just to illustrate. One of the things we did with the, the footprint is smaller and we were able to slide it to the west in order to save a bunch of trees along this property line. And then in addition to save some trees along the west road. So this is oriented differently than before. Illustrates more of a detailed image of the site plan for the senior living facility. You see a number of courtyards, courtyards are part of the, part of the project as well. And this is the, first of all, our footprint, a little hard to see some of the imagery, but as a, as a reference point, there was a second floor inside of the floor plan, which is independent living upstairs. So in terms of the, just to break it down in terms of detail of what's within the senior living facility, the nursing home or the nursing care component is 50 beds. Home for the agent, which should, which you clarified, Madam Chair, is assisted living. There's 23 beds, home for the agent, 18 beds. Independent living is 26 beds. For a total of 105 rooms and 117 beds. Just to point out that the nursing home component has a certificate of need that's been issued by the state of Michigan for those beds. So to give you a flavor for what typically what the Trilogy experience has been in terms of their facilities, they have 13 similar facilities like this located throughout Michigan. And they're located in other states as well, but. So the average resident age is 85. The breakdown between the female and male is female 60%, male is 40% typically on average. Average residency period is three and a half years. They employ typically on average 120 employees and that's spread over three year shifts. It's 120 through all the shifts, it's not 120. So that's, that's part of the job creation for the project. The services that are typically provided by their facilities are skilled nursing, memory care, physical therapy, medication management, pharmacy services are in-house. And then a laundry list of other typical kind of services that would come along. Assisted living, transportation deals, assistance with daily living functions as needed, social and recreational activities, which is 24 hour staffing and 24 hour emergency responses. So this is a full blown assisted living. So moving to the next component of the project, the ranch style village units, which are for lease. There's 149 of these are two bedroom with a dinner and office, and they're a little over 1,400 square feet. And the other component, which is the ranch style duplex units, which is the for sale product. There are 82 of those and they're about 1,700 square feet. So we talked about the site amenities in terms of at our last meeting, but. So scattered throughout the site, trying to encourage activities for the residents, whether it's walking paths or water features, gazebo's, pedestrian accessories, benches and the like, bicycle racks. There's a play school for visiting grandchildren, we talked about. Pass decorative lighting, you can drive the site, not just in the center part. And there's a dog park as well with waste stations. Facility for garbage. So then moving to the conditions of approval that, that were part and parcel of the approval last February. So anything in blue is, was written as a condition. So in terms of item one and item two, I think you can refer to the plans in the middle, but we've addressed all those elements within the plans. Now we still have new ones to address, but essentially the other ones have been addressed. The MDOT meeting, which Mr. Spicer, Mr. Kett spoke to, did occur on the 24th and there's some meeting minutes that were attached. When we get through this, we can discuss that a little bit further. The net zero, pursuit net zero construction, there's a narrative attached in your materials. We'll get into that a little bit further later, your questions. To utilize best management practices to afford stormwater management system. It's really certainly our attempt, I think, the Washington County requirements really ending that anyway. So that's what our design is based upon. The other ones that were a little bit unique to this project had to do with the inclusion of certain bylaws within the master deal declaration of easement covenants and conditions. So the first one had to do with the agricultural land disclosure elements. And these are all in your package. So basically these, what's in quotes and italics at the bottom is the language out of the declaration for both section four and then section five for the freeway approximate location. And then number seven has to do with the future commercial access to the boulevard and with respect to, you know, future third parties using that boulevard and language relative to preparing their, paying their proportionate share of maintenance expenses and the like. So those are the seven conditions of approval. Wanted to circle back a little bit to the environmental sustainability topic. And these are really contained within our, what we had proposed in the preliminary PUD and stormwater best management practice. I'm not going to read all of these, but this is what we had agreed to do or proposed to do at the preliminary stage, just for point of reference. And we spent some time sort of bringing a little more color to this, to the future solar farm in terms of where it was, how large it was, et cetera, and its benefits to the overall project. We discussed some of the legal challenges associated with that because of Detroit Edison or the terrorist associate of Detroit Edison. And we're still working our way through those, but still something we're very excited about in terms of that portion of the project. And we gave a quick overview of the sort of preliminary load elements and what this really says when we generate, it's about a megawatt of solar capacity in terms of that.
Is that? Okay, the, the load, did that include the, is it KBTS overall energy use or just the projected electrical use? Assuming some gas.
We didn't really take into account any gas. What it showed, Madam Chair, is this total capacity for this preliminary layout of a million to maximum KWH. And that would offset about 48% as illustrated on this chart of the, of the loads articulated here. We did not include the duplex units because those are all privately owned, but the other elements are.
So the lease and the.
So about 48%. This is a preliminary, but that was. We had, we had also discussed the topic of all electric and we pointed out that we will need natural gas for the project because the life safety systems are associated with not only the senior building as well as the backup for CWS, component of the project. We discussed our concern about heat pumps in cold weather climates, which is challenged, we believe. Concerned about unintended consequences of what that would mean to future residents, to senior residents. We did acknowledge that the heat pump technologies, improvements are evolving and it will continue to evolve as time goes on. And we discussed renewable gases and green technology that's available and actually now through DTA. So this, again, talking about the heat pump situation. So this map illustrates that basically reinforces the concern about the cold winter heat pump situation. So if you're in green or blue, there's a concern that they will be effective. This project, we're 300 miles south, and I think we will be having this conversation. And this slide illustrates the fact that Department of Energy. Department of Energy is really just sort of substantive. It's the concern that it created this challenge to, to manufacturers to accelerate the technology in that particular category. And this was earlier this year. So coming forward to where we are now, what we're talking about in terms of further initiatives on this topic is to really provide state of the art building envelope insulation for all the duplex units and civilians in terms of IECC 2022, regardless of the state of Michigan adoption status. In addition, we require all electric energy star appliances, all duplex units and buildings. We expect that by, in terms of our planting of trees, over a thousand trees that provide carbon sequestration for, we have got a different perspective of that. We're also proposing that we would make the, put the infrastructure in to make each of the duplex units solar ready, so future, future owner of that can make a decision at some point in the future. In terms of the senior facility, they typically use in their facilities all electric PTACs or ETACs in all the residential units. So it's a significant portion of that building is all electric. So continuing on, we were, as you, most of you probably know, the recently adopted Inflation Reduction Act has a lot of benefits in this category, including selected vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. So we certainly want to continue to look at that and. But at this point in time, we're still concerned about the technology and the Michigan current conditions. However, you know, with the incentives that are available, it makes it very compelling to look at. So we'll probably talk about the Eagle process, but just briefly moving to that. This sort of summarizes where we last left off. There was a public news period from early July to early August. The notice was posted at the township and posted on the website. I understand from the packet that you even provided response to Siles' inquiry on the 21st of September. And just to kind of summarize again, sometimes we get lost in all the details, but really the project purpose here of senior housing. It's clearly stated in your, in your master plan, both 2015 to 2021. It's supported by SNCOG demographic data, supported by a targeted market demand study, supported by the state of Michigan, certificate of need for assisted living beds. And there are no other assisted living facilities in Siles. And coming back to our original slide in the reading presentation, this is really, there's a senior housing need, which I think is undeniable. I would just. At this point, I just have a couple of comments about Mr. Kett and Mr. Spicer in terms of history, since they spoke here this evening. But. So after we had the meeting with MDOT on March 24th, we, I sent an email to Mr. Kett and Mr. Spicer telling them we were getting our land use attorney involved in preparing the document. So that email went to them on June 14th. And so we were creating, but we made them aware of that is going to happen. So our legal use, our legal counsel got involved, prepared a draft declaration, it's a draft declaration of easement agreement. He prepared, he prepared that for MDOT, sent it to them for their review on July 18th. They responded on the 19th, so they were basically fine with it. So our legal counsel then put that together, sent a cover letter to both Mr. Kett and Mr. Spicer with respect to the document and offering them to, if they, if they wanted to sign on, they could. It wasn't necessary because of the declaration. And then I understand that our legal counsel spoke with township's legal counsel.
Declaration of easement?
Declaration of easement agreement. Chair, I think it's, my note is in the back, but we can bring, pull it up online if you'd like to see it. And then the, our legal counsel, land use counsellors, had a conversation with Siles, township, legal counsel. Just a little bit of history there. In addition to that, our land use counsel did have a conversation with Mr. Kett. He was unable to reach Mr. Spicer. And then he had subsequent conversations with Mr. Kett's counsel. And so there was, there were attempts to communicate with him in terms of being transparent about what we were doing.
I have a copy of the agreement, the one sided agreement, if anybody wants to take a look at it. It's rather ridiculous, but we did take a look at it, yep.
Please explain.
That's, that's a point of order. Let, let us finish and we'll get into the easement pieces, the commissioners ask questions. Thank you.
The other thing I would say, just in closing, I hope that they answer questions is that the consultant layer had a chance to look at our consultants. We have no problem with any of the items that are listed there in terms of addressing them. And we're doing that right now.
Could it be made clear that Mr. Kett and Mr. Spicer must sign on to an easement agreement?
Point of order, well, I, we have an attorney here and I'm sure the commissioners have questions and so forth, so.
Thank you.
A point of order. Well, I, I, we have an attorney here and I'm sure the commissioners have questions and so forth, so thank you.
At that point, you know, we're ready to answer questions or move on as you see fit.
And um, we'll, we'll go to our planning consultants' reports and engineers' reports and, uh, here for the watershed.
You guys can take off your presentations for a moment. We may want it back at some point, but let me just get back to the. Okay, uh, thank you, everybody. Um, I think we've already talked about the process, but I'll talk a little bit more about the process. This is the final PUD stage of review. Uh, if you remember, the planning commission and township board both recommended approval. The planning commission recommended approval, township board approved the preliminary uh PUD project for Concord Heritage Woods. Um, at that time, preliminary PUD is when we really talk about things like um public benefit and kind of the parts of the project, you know, talked about qualification with PUD. And those were reviewed and discussed with both planning commission and township board at preliminary stage, that preliminary plan was approved. We are now essentially in the final PUD stage, which is a final site plan, uh, source. Requiring full detailed engineering, uh, full detailed landscaping, lighting, all the things we'd get for a final site plan. The final PUD stage review is also where the project ultimately in front of the township board, or there will be one more public hearing, right? You know, by that meeting in front of the township board. Uh, that's when the project would actually get its only designation as PUD. So preliminary PUD approval doesn't grant the applicant any real rights to build anything. It just gives them the right to submit for file, which is what they've done. Um, final site, final PUD is really where the rubber is rolled and we don't look at all the detail of this, of this project and a lot more than just conceptionally, which is kind of what we do. So that being said, we have, uh, our review comments are sixteen pages and I'm not going to read sixteen pages, I'm sure you're happy to know that. Um, I will uh skip to the back of my report. Page fifteen and sixteen is our, uh, recommendations and um we, we recommend that our comments, uh, we have nineteen of them, nineteen outstanding issues uh to be addressed uh by the applicant really prior to planning commission approval of the preliminary PUD. So in essence, we are recommending at this point, due to the number of conditions in our review, that the applicant revise when we submit the project. Uh, here, back in front of the planning commission, uh, again, before this moves on to the township board. And again, we have nineteen issues on our report. I assume the planning commission's read all of those nineteen. If you'd like me to read them, I can. If not, uh, if you have any specific questions or comments, I'd be happy to try to answer those. But the big picture here is that we are, um, we think there's enough items here that the applicant should come back before us at least one more time prior to uh moving on to the township board. Many of these are detailed in, in nature and as the applicant said, I indicated he didn't have, didn't seem to have any problem addressing these, but it's one of those. This is, this is a case, um, I think one of the members of the public mentioned that, you know, we want this buttoned down to a certain degree before it gets to the township board, and I would agree with that comment. And at this point, if there's, these are from planning perspective, later from engineer more, I think there's too many items that are not quite buttoned down yet for this to move on to the township board. So again, I'm sorry to be so brief, but I, I trust the planning commission's had time to review our report. It is sixteen pages and we'd be here for another half an hour if I went through every page. With that, if there's any questions, I'll try to answer them, or we could hear from the contrarian here and take questions at any time.
Let's do questions at one time. Get through. All right, um, is Sally here?
Yes, I am here. Alrighty, I will echo Doug's uh comments as well. We have forty seven items in our detailed engineer review letter that need to be addressed before I would recommend the planning commission move this forward. Um, I'll briefly give you a quick overview. I trust that you've read them all. There are a number of basic plan cleanup comments, just generic, small nitpicky details. Um, however, there is very limited information on the wastewater treatment plant that's been in there as well as um, missing some of the community wastewater utility services ordinance items. Um, there needs to be a maintenance agreement and all, and operation documentation, which I believe has been submitted, but it's not under review yet. So that has been submitted, but we don't have uh any comments on the X, we've not started the review. Um, they do have to go through state and county approvals for that wastewater treatment plant. That is, those two agencies are the jurisdictional agencies on that. The township has their own ordinance, but on the state and the county will take jurisdiction over that system if it were to default or fail. So we are waiting on those approvals as well, and then sanitary water, storm water, there's discrepancies on the plans, mostly minor. Um, then some minor plan cleanup items, like I mentioned, we need easements yet. There are some missing stormwater calculations. There's a few conflicts between the stormwater and the proposed water and sewer services that we think are going to cause constructibility issues. Um, there's missing ADA information. And um, there's still some fire truck turning template things and some grading issues that may cause flooding. So as Doug said, we echo that there are too many items to recommend approval at this point. So we are recommending the applicant revise and resubmit prior to the planning commission taking approval action on this.
I have one then also. Another review that we have in our package is from Washington County Road Commission. Washington County Road Commission on September twenty six, twenty twenty two uh indicates an issue that they're questioning with regarding to drainage along Baker Road. And they are also suggesting that the plans be resubmitted to the road commission for further review.
Then, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, we, or I know you work here for public comment. Um, um, and I just want to recognize that there, there's a person who was not in attendance. Um, who seems to want to comment.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay, so I need a motion to reopen public comment?
Motion to reopen public comment.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Um, all right, any other discussion?
Wouldn't that just be the one individual, but it would be whole reopening?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, okay, so um, with that in mind, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, it carries. All right, so we are reopening public comment and there is an individual in the audience who would like to make a comment. So, um, there is a sign up sheet up here if you come in and, and sign in and.
What's your name?
And state your name.
My name is Bill Hassel.
We're, we're going to sign in.
Um, at first I had a question and we were invited by the gentleman um in the far corner. Uh, if we had questions to speak up, that's why I speak, first of all, that's why I'm speaking up. Um, I saw the map and it looked like one of the entrances to the facility or the complex was on West Marshall Road, is that correct?
No, there, there's no access off of Marshall.
Well, the map showed. It showed access on Marshall Road.
Emergency access.
It's an emergency vehicle access.
Emergency vehicle access, okay. Um, so open to public comment, so I can, I can speak freely, yes?
Yeah, you have three minutes, sir.
Okay, um. I'm sure there's some great advantages to the seller of the property as well as the developer. But frankly, I don't see any advantages to the taxpayers of, of Washington County or of Scioto Township. Um, this is going to mean more infrastructure that we have to pay for. And there's nothing coming back to us except more traffic and more people. And where that place is located, there is going to be no direct access to um um amenities like shopping or otherwise. You can't walk from that corner to any of the businesses out on Jackson Road. And I object to it as a taxpayer in um Washington County and um Scioto Township. Um, for those reasons, uh, nothing comes back to us as an advantage. Seniors need housing, I agree. They don't need housing there. They don't need housing in our township, okay? They can, that should be elsewhere, it should be much closer to the center of cities. Uh, there was a meeting, no, I attended that a little bit, was about sustainability and Scioto Township wanting to be more interested in, you know, reducing carbon footprint. Getting a thousand more people in Washington County and Scioto Township does not reduce anybody's carbon footprint. Um, these facilities deserve to be uh somewhere, they don't deserve to be here. There is no advantage to us as taxpayers of this township and of this county. Thank you.
See anyone else? Okay, then. Entertain a motion to close public comments?
Move to close public comments.
By Commissioner Hyde, supported by Commissioner Chang. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Close again on eight oh three.
Close again at eight oh three, thank you. All right, um, I just, um, just because there's a, a lot of information here, um, I think we have some, some core items. Um, and I ask commissioners to add to those items because I, rather than getting into the detail, I think that there might be some broad items. And I see.
Do you want the, um, Huron River Watershed?
Yeah.
Who speaks first?
Uh, thank you.
Would you have a chair?
Is, uh, oh, in, in, because I see the, I mean, it's basically identifying public benefits. Because this is a PUD, the sustainability, the wastewater treatment facility, easements, um, sort of the characteristics of the health facility. Um, uh, and do commissioners have other big items?
I think that covers my concerns.
Was one of those the?
Go ahead.
So when you.
We'll get it. I, I think we can get it under that bracket.
Okay, so Rick Lawson, I believe, is here.
I would just add, when we talk about the easements, are you talking about the maintenance agreements too?
That would be part of it.
That would be part of it. Okay, so is Rick Lawson?
Is Rick Lawson is here?
All right.
I am, yes, thank you. Thank you for having me. Uh, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Uh, well, hi, I'm Rick Lawson. I am a watershed planner with the Huron River Watershed Council, and I'll be speaking on behalf of the council of which Scioto Township is an active member. Uh, Scioto Township is also an active member of a group called the Middle Huron Partners, which focuses on uh, two, two types of projects, uh, stormwater management across the region in the, in the Huron River. And also the um, uh, the uh, Ford and Belleville Lake um algae issues uh and phosphorus reduction activities. So I'm commenting on, on sort of both of those and, and Scioto's role in that. Um, specifically on this, on this project, I just wanted to, I really only have the ability to comment on Eagle's uh, uh draft permit uh and their response to the questions that were posed by the planning commission. Um, so I will talk about those. I would have liked to have reviewed the wastewater treatment plant uh design. Um, I'm not an engineer, so I can't, you know, you have your own engineer to review specifics on that. Um, and it looks like Eagle did review that, but I have not seen any materials uh on the actual treatment process um in the design plan. So I'm glad that that was commented on by the engineer. I think that's critical. As to the response, um, I, I have a few comments, I'll try to keep them brief. Um, the Eagle response to the questions about adjacent properties relying on wells um and their, uh, the permit, uh, the draft permit being sufficient to assure human health will be protected. Um, it's not clear to me that that's uh true. They did, they did recognize that several of the wells uh that, that have, have been tested currently exceed um uh the levels of uh of total nitrogen uh currently. Uh, and then an additional load would be added by the wastewater treatment plant. So I, I don't know how they're going to then um have those wells get reduced below um, below state standard levels. Um, uh, the other, uh, I, I still have some other questions. It seems like the only focus in the response letter was on um, on total nitrogen and I would uh be asking Eagle to explain why that's the only parameter that they're interested in uh with regards to human health consequences. Perhaps it's a surrogate that they're using to just detect if there's a intrusion from the groundwater discharge into uh those detection wells, but that would be a good question to ask of them is why, why is TIN the only thing being uh being lodged for, for human health concerns? Um, my other concern is the, the frequency of sampling and the very slow response uh if there are violations. So uh they're indicating that an action plan is only necessary uh if two quarters of exceedance of those thresholds are observed. Um, there's only quarterly monitoring, so only one sample every three months is required to make sure that the system's working properly and not contaminating wells in the area. That seems to me to be infrequent. Um, they do try to justify that. Um, and it perhaps is standard, but um that, that seems infrequent. And then the response um is, is very slow. That only requires then a voluntary report back, which thirty days after. Um, and, and then an action plan if necessary thirty days after that. So we're really looking at a year later that they're actually, you know, required to make any kind of response. That seems to be not very responsive. I would ask, could any of those timelines be pushed up? Um, you know, if, uh, if exceedances are determined. Um, and it doesn't indicate any consequences for violations um on anybody's part. Um, so other than needing to file a plan and then execute on that plan, there's nothing that says what happens if there is no plan. Uh, if there's, if, if they don't do that. Um, on the question of acceptable loading of uh, of elements into Mill Creek. That was one of our main concerns with the Watershed Council. Uh, Mill Creek is in the zone that is um, is impaired uh for high levels of phosphorus um as well as um, as, as well as uh E. coli bacteria. Um, so we're concerned about both of those. Um, it, they are including um the total phosphorus monitoring at the wells and that those wells uh where the um discharge would be joining the wastewater system can't exceed uh point zero two milligrams per liter, which does seem to be a good threshold. That's a pretty low background level. So if they are able to meet that and continuously meet that, then it would appear to me that that would be, um, that would be me. that would be, that would be meeting the, you know, the background level, at least phosphorus elements. There is nothing in there about bacteria however, and I think that is a real human health concern for this, when you're adding a wastewater treatment plant. And I'd like to see at least some justification as to why bacteria aren't concerned with the groundwater treatment system. And again, I haven't seen any details on the treatment process itself, so I don't know how that's being done. There was some initial concerns about the soil infiltration capacity, you know, if septics were just to be put in place, and it's not clear to me that that was fully evaluated. You know, I do, I do have a pretty good trust in Eagle employees, so I assume that they looked at the soils, but you might want to ask about that, you know, the particular soils in the area, whether or not they have the infiltrated capacity to be able to fully treat this new addition to the wastewater treatment plant. And then finally, on the issue of land application efficacy, that they, Eagle points back to this only being a five-year permit, and that they will review after that to see what the numbers look like, and they can always pull the permit. But it's been our experience that once a facility is put into place, it is really hard to turn that around, especially once people have, you know, started living in it. So, you know, that's just something I think for the planning commission to really take seriously under advisement, that, you know, if this is, you know, getting a shaky approval, I don't think that offers a whole lot of reassurance. And again, not being able to see any details on the treatment process doesn't allow me to see, you know, how that's being done, and, you know, the pathway from groundwater to the surface waters and particular Mill Creek. Those are things that I think really need to be included, if anything's to be approved, either by the planning commission and the board of trustees, or by Eagle through the permitting process. So hopefully, those comments will help with regards to getting the information that you need from Eagle on, you know, why they're permitting this wastewater treatment plant to be allowed into the system.
Thank you very much, Rick. And I believe you have the wastewater treatment facility designer here?
Eric, bring him on in a second, just a couple quick ones. One, in respect, in our preliminary submittals for the project, this was last December, 95% of this book was hydrogeological investigation information. We spent a fair amount of time discussing it at that mid-January meeting with our hydrogeologists, so apparently gentleman doesn't have access to that, maybe you want to share it with me. So that's one piece of information.
Yeah, I did not receive that, so if I could get that, that would be helpful. Glad to hear that it was done.
Yeah, it's public information at the township, and it was submitted as part of Eagle process, which has been an 18-month process.
And one of the things I have to say is that the township didn't receive the Eagle's submittal, and that would be really helpful to have if we could keep that and be able to post it. Thank you.
It's my understanding, and Ted can correct me, on the five-year situation, it's my understanding that all Ann Arbor's wastewater treatment plant has the same rules Dexter, Chelsea, whoever it is, they're all operating in the same rules in terms of the five-year renewal, if you want to call it that. So Ted, if you could jump on and address anything that was discussed, that you have information.
Good evening. The one thing I would like to point out is that the effluent, the wastewater effluent is tested weekly according to the permit prior to being discharged into the infiltration beds. The groundwater monitoring is done quarterly, but there is a, you know, a weekly track record of the water that's going into the ground. So Eagle is getting those reports on a monthly basis and watching what's going on. They will issue compliance letters if there is exceedances either on the effluent or in the groundwater, so they are, they do watch it, as happened at other places like that. The proposed wastewater plant is a sequencing batch reactor where we will add chemical treatment to solidize the phosphorus and filter it out, there will be a tertiary filter on it as well. We're happy to share that when the design process is ongoing at this point in time. I guess that's all I really have, unless there's something specific you'd like me to address.
I just wanted to ask, you said the wastewater treatment plant is a sequencing battery, something?
Batch, sequencing batch reactor, yes.
Reactor, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any, anything you wanted to say about testing for E. coli, is that pertinent?
The groundwater discharge is, plants in Michigan do not have a disinfection requirement, so that is a true statement. That's the Eagle thing, I don't, I can't speak to why.
Assuming that the ground can take care of it?
I believe so, yeah, I mean, it's, in a surface water plant such as Dexter or Ann Arbor, there's a, you know, a significant disinfection process where they're measuring the E. coli on a daily basis and understanding what's happening with that.
Is it possible to do that, even though it's not required?
It is possible to do that.
The other, if I could interject, one of the thoughts, so the question about the wells in the area, the Smith family, they have, basically their homes are located in a downgraded position with respect to discharge, and they have asked us to, they were going to put it in a new well anyway for their home, but they've asked us to look at connecting to the water system we're putting in as part of the project. So we're actively pursuing them with utility development. So that would be both for Old Farm House and then for the Jerry Smith residence, which is one to the west. So it's really only two homes that are downgrading with respect to the planning. And I think their desire is to connect to the system, so we're having discussions with utility partners on that.
Would you look into being able to test, add the testing for the E. coli as a part of your...
Certainly look into it, I'm not sure of the implications.
It looks like you're doing weekly wastewater testing. I don't know, and we'd have to, I guess there'd have to be some kind of standard, or maybe it's a utility wastewater standard for that.
I'm going to make sure I understood, the Smith family wants to connect to your wastewater treatment system?
No, no, to the water system.
Oh, the water system, well, of course.
It doesn't have anything to do with the wastewater.
Did I understand correctly, Mr. Erickson, that you said that the plant is currently under design in the design?
Yes, it's in the design process.
Thank you. That's why we don't have information on the details.
There's two permitting steps with the Eagle, there's the groundwater discharge permit, the 2018, that tells us what we have to treat to, and then the Part 41 process goes through the, you know, making sure we have adequate redundancy and adequate size of the facilities to meet for that treatment.
One question for Mr. Erickson that's appropriate. So Mr. Erickson, upon completion of the construction, who is responsible for the wastewater treatment system?
The, on a privately owned system, the state puts in a, the Eagle has a policy, the WRD 010, where the developer has to put in five years of operating costs in escrow after a certain point in time, and a certified operator will be hired to operate the wastewater plant. The policy is put into place for private ownerships to give the community money if there is a, you know, they walk away, for lack of a better word.
So when you say the operator, you mean the owners or the developer?
The, well, I guess I don't know how Mr. Johnson's going to handle that part of it, but the, so that somebody is going to own the plant, but there's going to be a certified wastewater operator that operates it and does the testing and the monitoring of the plant.
And that's all within a master deed of the property? I mean, where is that defined, where is that written, once the developer exits?
There will actually be a separate agreement for that wastewater treatment plant that does maintenance and operation, so it will be a recorded document with the county, kind of like the PUD development agreement, it's very similar, but it's specifically for the wastewater system.
We had submitted a draft of that agreement a couple weeks, at least a week ago, to the township.
Rick, I wanted to ask you if there were any other questions that you had for Mr. Erickson?
No, I don't have any, I really don't have any questions for Mr. Erickson without seeing the details of the plan, so once I would, you know, look at that, then I might, but I can't really, can't really do that. I will say that, you know, Eagle didn't post the full application either with design, you know, drawings and specifics of the plan, and they did post a lot of the conversation between their staff and their review notes, but I did not see the plans there either. So that may have been an oversight on Eagle's part on their, on posting to the public site, but I haven't been able to look at that.
And we did request it, so hopefully we can get that information, make that available to the public as well. Okay, great, thanks. Alright, any other questions on the wastewater treatment facility?
General, we had, we, the township had requested there be an open...
Oh, yeah, a public hearing, and...
I didn't see it was turned down, but I didn't see them say yes, it will happen.
It does not sound like it, they, right, they communicated with us about our questions, and then they talked about maybe attending a meeting, but then they actually itemized a response to our questions, so we're trying to put together some more questions to go back.
The board of trustees were talking?
No, they're talking on us, the planning commission. With consultation with Huron River Watershed Council.
Oh, with Huron River Watershed?
And it certainly was when you were, when the request for a public hearing took place, there was no intention to try to list all the questions that might come up in that at the time, so they should...
Right, I know, it's, yeah, right, and we could probably state our disappointment in that. Okay, so, I'm going to go back to my list. So let's, next probably is the easement piece, and so I think, I, you want to, you're, it sounds like it's a declaration of easement agreement. Can we get some definition on what that is and why that instrument is being used, and just a little background would be helpful.
Yeah, Attorney Jim Fink is with us, so Jim, if you're still here, I see your name, you can unmute and perhaps help us with this issue.
I am here, and I'm sorry, commissioners, I haven't looked at the declaration of easement in the last week, if I've seen it at all, but I think it might be helpful if before my battery runs out on my laptop. Doug, can I share my screen?
Yep, I think you're able to do that. Pretty sure everybody's...
Okay. Are you looking at the drawing that has the letters BK and a pick of the phone? Alright, and if we just take a look, this, of course, is the applicant's property and the driveway, this is Baker Road. Notice that the applicant's property does not start at Baker Road or in the middle of Baker Road, it starts at the edge of the right-of-way. And the same is true for the parcels to the south. And I bring that up only because as we are talking about the applicant's building of this driveway, this is all in the applicant's property, and essentially, the way I'm looking at this is that MDOT has said, yes, you can have access to Baker Road across our right-of-way provided you do this, and that is put a turnaround here so that the folks to the south can come up, turn and get to their property, they would still exit the same way.
Wanted to do that.
We weren't supposed to click okay.
We just lost.
So maybe now if you could just phone it.
Plug in?
Yeah, really, yeah, no kidding.
The interest to the Boulevard doesn't start, let's say, if the road is here, and the interest to the Boulevard, their property.
You just called it, okay.
Let me just say, the Boulevard property owners starts here, what is this between the start of the Boulevard and Baker Road?
Jeez, M.D.O. Eastman.
An M.D.O. Eastman.
Or an M.D.O. property ownership, I mean, it's the right-of-way, is it the M.D.O. right-of-way?
It's the, you all hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so we've lost my screen share, but you all know the part of the packet that I was pointing to, and so here's my point. I don't think that the commission or the township board has to concern itself with the potential dispute between the applicant and its neighbors, and I don't say that to say it's not your problem, but you're not regulating M.D.O. property, you are making a recommendation about, at this point, just to read of the property, and if the folks to the south believe that they are being damaged either by M.D.O. or the applicant, they have the ability to take legal action and have their rights explored. I don't think it's necessarily up to the planning commission or even the township board to make... That's similar to the advice that I gave you regarding the potential private road on Delhi that is still going to come before the board soon, but the point is the same, a dispute between the two property owners doesn't necessarily have anything to do with whether you approve the rezoning for a project such as this.
Can I ask you a question, Jim Fink? So as I understand it, and I may not understand it clearly, the... Oh, that, never mind, that's, I'm thinking about the maintenance agreement.
I think that the maintenance agreement might have to do with the applicant granting permission to its neighbors to use a portion of the applicant's parcel, because they will have to if the, if M.D.O. requires this and everything is approved. The neighbor... The neighbor, when they enter to their property, they'll have to traverse the uh applicant's parcel that attaches to Baker Road, either to come to that first small turnaround for a car or a light truck or up to the Boulevard turnaround.
Right, right.
Going to have a larger thing. So that, so they, the applicant would grant an easement, and if the applicant just said, no, you can't traverse our property, there would be, uh, again, it would be the property owners. But it, and I suspect they all get to the table, they can work it out.
Commissioner, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the wrong take.
Uh, Mr. Fink, I just want to make sure that I was understanding you correctly. You said that we, uh, the planning commission does not need to consider this conflict, or we should not consider this conflict? I can, I can ask a little clearer, um, are we?
Go ahead.
Are we, are we getting ourselves in any sort of legal trouble by making a consideration of this uh potential conflict um, in our, in our discussions on this uh PUD, or are you just saying that we don't have to take that into consideration, that there's other avenues that that can be resolved?
Can you hear Commissioner Hume?
I, I trying to choose my word, which, you know, I don't do in private, but I try to do publicly. I, I'll put it this way, if the only reason that this body recommended an island township turn down the project was because there was a potential dispute about access between the neighbors, it is possible that the applicant might seek legal recourse. I happen to know the applicant's attorney and opposing counsel, not of record, but am involved in litigation and negotiation and mediation with him for another client. I know of his work in other communities besides ones that I represent. And um, he's a competent attorney and it's the only way the applicant thought they could proceed with their project. They might do that, uh, or I don't, we, of course, we never know. So I, I'm not saying that you can't consider it. I think you can consider anything you want as you make your recommendation. I am saying that it's not only not necessary, but probably uh probably not even wise to consider that, because if there is a legal issue between the two property owners about access, that is between them and not between the township and them. And the reason I say that is because M dot has control over that right of way. And M dot can say to anyone, this is how you will have access. If M dot were to deny all access to those property owners, it would be a taking, and they would, they would have to compensate that. But that's not what's happening here. And if they think they have a claim for a diminution in property value, they can pursue that claim. And, and again, I don't say that they, we shouldn't consider the neighbors. You could, you've been considering public comments. And I don't say that to say that you shouldn't necessarily participate in trying to facilitate a resolution if this project would be approved otherwise. You have other things to consider, as we've all heard tonight. But um, I would not recommend that you vote to approve or recommend or not approve this project, recommend approval or recommend disapproval of this project, just based on.
Thank you for clarifying.
So we would just approve a project despite the fact that it leaves our citizens in a lesser position?
Well, I think they have the same legal position, whether you approve it or disapprove it, regarding their ability the applicant's ability to put a road pursuant to M dot requirements, or the adjoining property owner's ability to thwart that based on an issue of access to the right of way.
Thank you. Any other, other questions on the easement piece?
So just clear, just clarifying, the issue is that it's the M dot right of way that the access road is on and the um, and the M dot right of way gets is what is in between the applicant's property and Baker too.
Let me, let me put it this way. I, I think it might help, and it might help the neighbors under advocating for, which I'm not, if the property were combined into a single parcel, and there was no applicant for a rezoning, and someone wanted to use that property in compliance with the existing zone, but wanted to put in a driveway to access the larger parcel and service a larger parcel, M dot might require that turnaround at driveway work, because this is immediately across from or to Baker Road. In that case, would not be before the planning commission on a rezoning, it would be to, um, it, it might even be a buy right project, would, would not require any zoning approval at all. Sense?
Yes.
In other, in other words, someone could still be putting in the same road, and you wouldn't be considering that as part of your zoning approval or your planning approval.
Commissioner Hyde.
Um, Mr. Fink, this may or may not be something you can speak to, but uh, from prior meetings, we had, I was under the impression that there was a property owner to the south of this Boulevard entrance that had a deed declaration stating what their access to Baker Road consisted of, and how they could, you know, they had to use the the service drive. I'm not quite sure what the deed said, it was alluded to, we didn't read it. Have you read it, and is there a conflict that we need to be concerned about?
I, I, deeds for those three parcels. I did not see, first of all, an easement, and I don't know this, but I believe that their access isn't by an easement. Each, I, I went out there on Tuesday after my meeting with some town officials and, and took a look at the right of way. Each, each of those parcels has a driveway that goes to the Baker Road Service Drive is what I call it, and to the right of way. There, I did not see in any of those deeds a specific um, grant, remember this would be from M dot um, of a specific use of the right of way. It, I'm not saying it doesn't exist. I didn't see it when I looked at the deeds for those parcels and uh printed them from the register of deeds page. If those property owners have that, they should be um in contact with their attorneys, and they, they could provide this to us, and, and I think it would be relevant to the planning commission, but it would be even more relevant to the applicant.
Yes, thank you.
I could just interject one point. Uh, within the meeting minutes, I think the document referring to uh, there is a quote we put in the meeting minutes within item number nine that spells out what was stated in this whole title work of Mr. Spicer's properties.
And it, it, as you know, I blew out my battery, I, I can't actually look at it, but I looked at uh the deed. I did not see that it um, did anything except give access to Baker Road. And they have that through the right of way, and of course, the proposal that we've seen does not stop access or i- ingress or egress from Baker Road. It, it doesn't change the ingress, but it, um, it does not limit the ability they do now, which is move their vehicles and, and anything else in and out, and the um the drawing that I saw and the explanation I had from the applicant's attorney would be that even a semi truck would be able to get to those parcels by going to that second turnaround where the Boulevard is. But I am no.
Thank you very much. Um, uh, so we have, um, public benefits with a, a PUD, um uh, uh, it would be good, because um, Commissioner Hume is new, if you could um specifically identify um, the, the public benefits.
Uh, I could go back to the prior. Sorry for that delay, um, this is, this is what we use with the board of trustees, which has a summary.
You guys over here, you're never about to speak, you're just excited.
I'm gonna get you, I'll zoom through this till we get.
Marshall Road or Baker?
Baker. Alright, so basically to summarize the two developments we discussed, fire plan commission, the board of trustees. Um read them, the project would contribute to hourly housing objectives and facilitate aging replacement opportunities, particularly in the township's master name. The project would preserve, provide for preservation of 61 acres of open space and natural features. Project would provide for land conservation area of approximately 17 acres to be dedicated to township. The project would maintain the rural character of Marshall Road, preserve the original farmhouse and property, and not add new traffic specifically in Marshall Road. Project proposes one-story cluster-type housing, tree preservation, and hundreds of hundred buffer which will result in minimal visual impact to the surrounding areas. The project would provide for a future planned commuting pathway by providing a route and easement on the property as part of the commuting pathway system. The project would provide for elements of reforestation specifically along the freeway. The project would incorporate best management practices for the stormwater management system. Project would provide for permanent jobs of the senior wage, so we talked about that earlier, 120 jobs. The project would provide for construction jobs with positive residual effects to the regional economy and local industrial sector businesses. The project would enhance the local community tax base for the township, county, and school district to support community services as compared to the existing land losses. Project would provide for future demonstrated support of key legal, summarized in the master plan. Including following public pathway connections, public control of water systems, township fire resources, assistance. Need a future belt agreement to provide for proportional contributions for the belt goals, and consistent level of P D project precedence in the township example with the comments. And that's, that's the summary that we've talked about, before with you as well as with the trustees.
I think we've had um ample public comment, and uh people, you know, we, we always um read and record emails, if, if people wanna um address the the board. Thank you.
May I not speak?
No.
She's saying, she sent an email. At this point, we'll be.
I'll send you an email. I'd like to speak, but I'll send her an email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Um, and then, um, there are some questions about, um, you know, the health, uh, the health facility itself.
Yes.
And about, um, I think some of the questions were, you know, around, um, uh, you know, having the, um a lot of facilities go to single room versus having double occupancy, and then the outdoor sort of spaces accessible.
What I'd like to do is bring um Keith Rider in the conversation from Trilogy Health Services, and Keith can speak to those operational kinds of questions. Keith, if you can hear us. Keith on?
Yes. Good, good evening, and thanks you, thank you for having Trilogy Health Services a part of this meeting. Uh, greatly appreciate the opportunity, uh, council members. So I, I've, I've been following along, and our community is an amazing community. We have interior and exterior attributes such as, such as, um, we do have, you know, the 105 rooms, 117 beds. So we do, uh, indeed, we do have um rooms that are shared use. Um, but that is a very limited, that is a very limited factor, uh, but is, is sometimes necessary. Um, it, it, it is not something that usually, you know, a, a council takes uh issue with in the past, I've been involved with my 119 projects. Um, we do a fabulous job of creating courtyards and play and exercise areas, putting greens, uh, trails throughout the, the community and the facility itself, uh, giving, giving our residents, uh, you know, large interior atriums, exterior uh, areas where they can go and meet and play cards. It's actually a very amazing facility. Um, and we would be willing to come back to you at a later date and do a, do a, a presentation that shows the inside and the outside of our facility. Um we have a 119 other facilities, and I believe it's 13 similar facilities just in the Michigan market. Um, they're very, very well received. So. I.
Yeah, a question, this is sort of, um, I guess, Mr. Johnson talked about it being a continuum, and it sounds like um, you know, there is, you know, from, including memory care and so forth. Um, is, is the idea that, I mean, is there an agreement that someone who is leasing then automatically has access to um, or first priority? How does, how does that continuum work?
With respect to other elements of the project, um, there's no formal agreement for that setup. It's definitely like a true CCRC, um, but the idea was that if you're, you're an independent living in the other components, you're already there as you grow to that age of 80, 82, whatever. It's an opportunity to be, you know, not having to move off sites where it's a natural connection, really a natural market for senior.
And, and is there um, any provision, I'm, I'm thinking about, I mean, with seniors, sometimes there are you know, people live longer than they thought. So someone is in your facility and um, all of a sudden their resources are diminished. Um, how, how is that?
Our, our facility has Medicare and Medicaid, um, that would, that would take over there.
Just to be clear, you said, if they exhaust their finances, they could stay at your, your facility under Medicaid?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it my understanding that they are the operators of the facility after you've developed?
Trilogy Health Services operates our facility. Excuse me, I'm sorry, there's a lot of, there was a lot of noise. I was having a hard time hearing. Uh, Trilogy Health Services would operate our facility. We do not, and, and would not operate the, the villas or the duplexes uh, that were aforementioned, the 82 duplexes of the 149 villas. Um, we, we don't have any agreement at this time. We, we don't have any agreement at this time to operate those.
Understood.
In this subdivision.
It might be, if we do have a future meeting, you can show me that this is table, then I would suggest that they do have a presentation. It would be very informative.
I mean, because it, I don't believe the other facility that had site plan approval right now Had, it was primarily independent living, was it not? So this is, this really, yeah, or memory care or the other thing that this has is the rehab. And yeah, so this provides a lot of additional Services that aren't available here.
And correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ryder. Each of those services provided, the Individual pays for that, right? So there's, so correct me if I'm wrong, there's a set price to reside in your facility and then the services are over and above that set price. Is that correct?
Depending on the level of care, you are correct.
Yes.
Because we, because we have independent care that has no care, our excuse, I'm so sorry, independent living that has no care associated with it. So the second story of the building, our 25 rooms up there, those are just Individuals over the age of 55 that can live there and reside within the community. But then we have it all the way up to and including our Memory care individuals who need 24 hours a day, You know, care and controls so that they don't harm themselves or get out into the community through elopement. So we, we have, we have all continuums.
Would this be one of the larger or smaller or right down the middle of the typical Facility that you say that you've, that you run right now? 119, did I hear you say?
117 beds, 105 rooms.
Oh, no, I had.
No, yeah, no, we have 100, 119 facilities. Are you asking if we're one of the larger healthcare providers?
No, is this particular project one of the, how, how does this compare to other of the 119 that you already run? What is the size of this one compares?
This is comparable. We've gone through five, we've evolved over the years. So meaning that we've been building basically a relatively similar building to this. But it has evolved throughout the years. This size has grown slightly larger because we've added the second story, the independent living On the second floor, this used to be just a single story. And then we added the, the independent, the 25 independent living rooms on the second floor, Which increased the size of the building, but this is a typical building that we do.
Good. It changed size from the initial that was presented to us. And to this one, and I'm assuming that you had some input in that. Because that was what was stated that you were Revising it to meet the actual needs of the, of the care. And balancing the number of workers per the number of living Residents, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and I, I do agree, it would be great to have a presentation at some kind of The more, the particulars of that.
I have one more question for Mr. Ryder. So you said that you've been listening to the remarks in the meeting and I, so you know about the permitting and the wastewater treatment system to some degree. Are you prepared, what would, do you have a plan or will you have a plan in place? Let's say the permit is withdrawn and you have to move your residents. What happens then?
Well, we, I, I don't see how this could be withdrawn once it's permitted. Would, would be my question. And I know that Jim Fink, I don't see, he's on here but muted right now. But I think if we've made it to that point, You, you have the ability to abate, but the, the system isn't our system, so.
No, we're not involved at that point.
Yeah, I think what, what it's saying is worst case scenario, the wastewater treatment facility fails. And You need to have a, a plan for.
Relocation.
Yeah.
I, I would, we're a, we're a very large company. We have departments that would, I think, definitely be involved in those decisions upfront. But as, as the person, you know, with, being in charge of the development, this, this, that's, that's my portion of it. I think that once Eagle approves this and we get down that road, there, there's very little chance that, that I'm going to be worried about the permit being pulled.
Probably right about that, Mr. Ryder. I didn't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I just, you know, Wanted, wanted some thought in that direction because these are people's lives, elderly people's lives who are not very flexible, so.
That, that HFES would, would definitely be involved and we would have a plan in place.
Yeah, that's an interesting question. Yeah, it's health facilities evaluation section, yeah. Do they have any issues with The wastewater? Do they have any?
I don't, I don't think they're involved in wastewater or the, or the, of it.
As long as it's approved facility, I guess, probably.
Yes.
Commissioner, hi.
Thank you. I, I can't find my question, so I'm going to wing it. I, I had a question about the licensing of such a facility, senior care facility. And the amount of control that The licensing process puts on design and layout. I don't know, I don't know anything about it. So I guess my question is, do you have to go through an approval process for how your facility is set up? And operated?
So, so, so it's very, it's a very easy answer and yes, it's a very, very lengthy process with HFES and yes, our, our buildings. And it's why, you know, we use the same building and continue to improve the same building. The building that is presented here is being built in Hudsonville, it's being built in Muskegon, it'll be built in Kalamazoo, it's currently being built in Bowling Green, Ohio, Lancaster, Ohio, Liberty Township, Ohio. So this, this building's been vetted many, many times over and over again. And, and meets the needs of, of this project.
Thank you. That's what I hoped to hear.
Yes.
And is it, but you do have your C O N already, is that correct?
Yes.
That's a certificate of need for, you can't have the beds, the licensed beds, the nursing without a certificate of need.
Absolutely. Now, we don't have HFES approval yet because we haven't even submitted the plans. We wouldn't submit the plans until we have your basically plan approval. You know, going, going from there.
Any, any other questions on the health facility itself? Alright, sustainability. Alright.
You guys have been amazing. I'm, I'm going to go back on you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Alright, sustainability. Since you sat before us, The township has adopted a resolution of achieving carbon neutrality by 2035. So that would include your facility. So it's important to us that as we're approving developments, That they also have a plan to achieve carbon neutrality by 2035. So that has, you know, implications with, and thank goodness for the Inflation Reduction Act. And I know you've, you're probably looking at that and, I mean, I, I think it makes sense to align With both the, you know, either look at the, is there already the DOE program? Or the Energy, Energy Star Portfolio Manager, Energy Star Certification? Because those are the ones that you get the, the additional funding for, so. And thanks for saying that you're designing to 2021. Does that also include the senior living facility?
We've brought it to their attention and indicated it's likely to be adopted. Matt, who can speak to that? It's likely to be adopted this year anyway.
They just have to go through J cards. Yeah, but well, we'll see. So, yeah, so we're, well, it, it's Great that you have a consultant working with you on it. Do you want to? It, it sounds like it's still a little mushy about commitments. Just to let you know, we, you know, that, we are pretty serious about that resolution. So take that into, you know, sort of consideration and it would be good to understand how you would see this development meeting that. The other thing that is, is kind of interesting is The, there is a development in Ann Arbor that is breaking some ground with an agreement with D T E to have a microgrid Within their development. They are, my understanding is they're also looking at D T E providing utility grade batteries as a buffer between the microgrid and D T E's grid. The other, another piece is a commitment to a, a specific level of EV chargers, EV charging capability, even though this is a senior facility. You know, by 2035.
Seniors drive?
Yeah, yeah, they do. Yeah, they do. Employees and so forth. So having some sort of commitment, we, we do have And, you know, we're considering an EV charging ordinance, so it would be good to have ahead of time at least your commitment to What that, what those charging, what that charging would be, especially at this phase.
Charging level?
Well, no, well, not the level, the number of charging and yeah, that type of thing.
Council members, this is Heath Ryder again. We are, we are committed and we are doing a study now. We are already prepared to put the infrastructure in to add EV charging to our facility. We're just, Like you say, only about 25 of our residents actually drive out of everyone. Now our employees, of course, do drive. So we're looking at and doing a study with the company. And we've turned that company over to Daniel Johnson as well for his review, but we, we are considering EV charging And possibly, possibly solar on top of our carports, although The, the study hasn't determined whether or not due to the climate, if there will be enough solar energy to power even a single charger. But we're having that study done now.
Okay, that's great. Yeah, because it, actually, most of the commercial buildings have found there is a positive cash flow with the, With solar at this point, especially with the Inflation Reduction Act, so that's really great. I mean, this is a great time to be doing this type of facility. The other thing to take, and this is Sustainability, the other thing that we've become aware of our, you know, you do get additional Tax credits and so forth if they meet certain Affordable housing pieces too. So I don't know if you've thrown that into the mix at all to assess financially. But that, that might be an interesting piece too. So do you want to talk anything anymore about some of the sustainability and then if commissioners have some specific questions?
We just had a couple of points, you know, you'd like, Matt, you chat a little bit about our sort of narrative also. So one question, first of all, with respect to Sile Tangent's recent adoption, would we be the first project?
We're talking to all our projects about it.
Go in projects, people are putting in EV stations.
And, and also looking at, actually, we have a commitment From Cornerstone for all of their townhouses, we're pushing harder on the multifamily for them. But they're going all electric in, in their townhouses. If you're interested, there are, I can, glad to facilitate some conversations with some developers that have done. We're actually doing a, a lunch and learn on November 9th that goes through the Some very specifics around, this is multifamily rather than the, so what, on, on different types of P Pumps and so forth, so. That's, there's, there's a lot of information out there, actually.
Well, just going back to EV for a second, we had indicated that in all of our duplex units or our villas, we're getting prepping those for EV stations. So there's 231 preps for that. And then in addition to that on our side, we're committed to doing a charging stations for the clubhouse for the community building in addition to that.
So it would be an upcharge for the person buying, purchasing the duplex if they wanted to put that in?
No, it would go in, it would be, it's part prep that go in, the prep, when the service.
And the service, but they, but then they would come in.
The wind would come up the car.
On sustainability?
Yep.
Well, I noticed that there's a future solar farm. This probably is coming from me not being here, but in the earlier talks, but what? Is there any requirement to actually follow through on building the solar farm? There's no requirements that they have to build it?
That's, well, part of it is how, is a negotiation with, with D T E. And if the one megawatt, There are lots of issues with multifamily and, because every household has to have a meter. And so unless you have a, an agreement with D T E to do a microgrid, The one megawatt has to feed a meter.
But aren't the duplexes in the villas, don't they have separate meters?
Yeah, so, but nobody's going to use a megawatt of power. Every, so the way solar work, yeah, solar has to be attached to a meter. And, and each one of those households are required to have a meter. And no household's going to use a megawatt of power, or you have to divide the solar array up.
Can they use less than the megawatt, one megawatt?
You can't divide it.
You can't divide it.
Into the separate meters. But my.
Oh, I see.
You know the question I'm going to ask?
Go ahead.
The question is, can you meter all of the solar farm electricity that's produced out through it to D T E? And then have, as part of your homeowner's agreement, that you would divide it up proportionately to all the units? You could do it on a monthly basis or billing basis or however, but
There are, there is a number of things we're looking at, solar Conform to the D T E, short of a microgrid. We have the answer, we have different load work orders, for example, if you break the grid into pieces that fall under the certain, it's part of the year or something. You could feed the community wastewater utility system with that, for example. Trilogy is open to being serviced by the solar farm as well if that component works. Components for the villas works, the duplex, it's got to be a separate deal. So we're trying to find a strategy with D T E, we're working with Analogics as the covering one. Just doing Ann Arbor and stuff. Having discussions with him as well.
All you can do, push D T E, please do.
Yeah, you know, wading, wading through the archives. The other sort of side story is you really have to, you don't really want to talk too much until you have street addresses. You can't really have street addresses to help with the projects.
They have a new form that for $2,000. You've done that, okay, but they don't give you any commitment, do they?
Answer Mr. Human's question. It's important to iron this out now because The way a P U D works is if it, if it ends up on the final P U D plan, it's required to be built. But it's just no question, it has to be built. So we have to iron this out. If it's gonna, this is something that can happen, it'll be on the plan. If it's on the final P U D plan that gets approved by the township, It has to be built. If it becomes part of the, you know, P U D is a rezoning to a plan. And so it basically becomes part of it. So we have, this has to be ironed out, whether it's going to happen or not. When it might happen, it can't just show up, you know, on a plan as a wing of prayer. I mean, it's got to, it's either going to be there or it's not going to be.
So it can't just say future, it has to say when in the future. So it can't just say future, it has to say when in the future.
If we want it, we, we have to be a little more specific. So we should get away from the language future solar farm, maybe they say it's gonna be a solar farm or it's not a solar farm.
It could be phase two.
That's what I was trying to get at.
Phase two means.
Because future solar farm feels very nebulous. Now, I understand that there's a lot of roadblocks to implementing that, but that does seem like something that can be.
And it seems like you couldn't do a microgrid unless you had it designed.
Yeah, I mean, there are, the MPSC allows, they call them sandboxes for experimentation. And, and so you can do, I think, I think that's, so they, there is some flexibility with DTE, but you've gotta have that relationship and, and welcome to it, yeah, so.
DTE has to, has to want to do the project, I think that's the challenge is, I mean, we can say, come.
And you know what, the township might be able to. Way in, yeah, not that, I mean, SIO doesn't have the same relationship that like Ann Arbor fails, but we can definitely use Ann Arbor's connections. The other thing, and this is probably, well, we'll know in a, in a year, is even something like this, if Ann Arbor has their SEU, their Sustainable Energy Utility, it, they can, they can be part of it anywhere. And they're actually, the Sustainable Energy Utility is running in parallel to DTE's service and just providing the renewables. So that, that's another, but, but it's kind of a future option, you know, like that one.
Is there any opportunity to put the solar then, maybe just on the senior facility, like to produce maybe just a minimum of megawatts? You know, instead, I don't know about the solar farm, this might be nebulous in the future, but maybe 30% of the roof coverage or something or?
Well, the, the solar farm could feed the, and especially if they're using PTAC units and all that, oh, I forgot to ask them. Whether, because the other thing would be for them to look at a all-electric kitchen. There are some definite advantages of that because it lowers your makeup air requirement and, which is, actually decreases your, your energy use. And they have full kitchens and the U of M, all their new dining facilities are all electric. So that, you know, that's a, that's, that's big cooking, yeah.
I, this is Ryder again. I think that we have to consider one thing, but there's a lot of discussions going on here, but HFES is going to rule on this. I would have to have backup for this during emergencies, during snow. Solar, solar would not be the, the total answer, we couldn't be dependent on.
No, you, you need your generator at this point. I mean, there are, unless you had like a, a, you know, a commercial grade utility, yeah. It, it would be too big of a battery at this point. No, I totally agree that you need.
HFES approval even for this discussion.
You need that, you need the, the generator. No, we won't argue with that.
But that wouldn't stop you from going all electric on your kitchens.
I'm, I'm not sure at this time, that's a, that's a much larger study. We, we could not come up with an idea.
Well, if we table, we'll give you some time to, to speed up that study.
We can give you some connections with the University of Michigan too. So anyway, any other items from a sustainability? I have one question about native planting and making sure that we don't have invasive species in the, you know. Yeah, okay.
Can I ask a question about the commitment to carbon neutrality in 2035? Do you have any level of more like specificity of like what that actually means? Because that's part of the challenge in my role, is like carbon neutrality can mean a lot of different things.
It definitely includes offsets, however, I would look, if you look at the zero code, there is a, a procurement and, and actually it's an appendix CC of the 2021 ICC. Okay, it, there's a default value for different types of renewable procurement. And it sort of says what is the most valuable.
Yeah.
And so doing something like migraine power that, that produces the power in Michigan is, is more desirable than purchasing renewable power outside the state.
Yeah.
You know, things like that, so.
So if we were to demonstrate by the ICC math, the, like, using the different tariffs and rec sort of factors they have to demonstrate carbon neutrality for operational energy, like that, that's kind of what you're looking for?
Yeah, that would be great. And, and you know, for, for instance, you know, the, you know, the health facility, you know, obviously fleets are gonna take a little bit of time and availability and stuff, but you know, it should look at that, how, how you're maintaining your grounds. All of those things, we're really trying to push this, the transition. And so this, with an all-new facility, it'd be awful to sit there with legacy emissions that you have to continually offset.
So you're talking both scope one and two emissions, you want total, total scope one and two, not just, not just building operational? Yeah, I mean, just, just for, you know, my role here as the consultant is to help figure out that math equation. And so part of my, my directive has been to help just facilitate what's the most cost-effective way of getting to this, this end? And part of the kind of discussions back and forth is like, what is the end? And so I think this, this conversation has provided lots of clarity because I had lots of questions, because as you all know, there's, there's lots of different ways to define this, and so I was just always kind of on the hunt for like, what, what is the thing? What is the end goal? And so.
And I'll tell you that the, I mean, we're still working on that, the operations part for the township and, and the county is too. Their plan is just coming out, so.
So we're, we're working with the development team to really kind of like optimize what that, where those investments come in, whether or not it's demand reduction strategies to lower the energy use intensity across all the facilities. And then what's the kind of offset math equation and how do you cure those? And so the ultimate goal is to create a path and communicate a path to carbon neutrality at a gate, so we're not waiting to 2035.
And there, I mean, and then there are some other things, there, there are also, as far as, you know, what happens to the lumber that gets cut down? Because if, you know, you end up chipping that lumber, you know, the trees versus putting it to a different use, then all of a sudden the, the carbon value of the trees that you've cut down goes into something that maintains the, the embodied carbon.
Sequestration.
Yeah, the sequestration, yep.
So, the trees that are.
Both ways, yeah.
There are companies around the township that are recycling the lumber as children.
We're actually working with one right now to look at that option.
Yeah, and actually Cut is having an open house on Sunday. I'll send you the invite.
This may sound like a trivial little thing in the larger scheme of sustainability, but I presume that your project to, within a senior system facility, well, I guess that would, you know.
Commissioner Hyde?
I know, I don't know how this fits into it, but in the calculations, does the generator backup count against the, their own emissions and is it on a per hour of use basis or is it just, how, how does that fit in?
Yeah, how do you calculate what that use is gonna be? You'd, you'd probably look at a, a typical, you know, because they, because they actually run once a week, just for a few minutes. But you would, right, right. But, yeah, but there are, they're just, you translate everything into KBTUs and then the, and, you know, and then it's the factor of, well, we're getting into all these details. But yeah, I mean, you, you do factor.
And, and is the wastewater treatment facility on a generator backup?
So we're not, I mean, that's, I think it's the, the last 10% of fossil fuel use that is, is gonna be. Okay, so, no, I, I wanna thank you, because this is a big project, it's a really important project. There are a lot of, you know, pieces to it, so, you know, certainly, I think this is really worth it. I mean, thank you for, you know, proposing to do this, this special meeting and so forth then. You know, obviously, we're not at a point where we're gonna approve it tonight, but I think informationally, this was really important and.
I thought they asked us for a special meeting, we didn't ask.
They did, they, no, they did, yeah. Oh, no, it was good to do that. I was just saying, it was good to do that, to be able to focus on this particular project.
Absolutely, absolutely. Is, is the, there was one other issue on your list, which is the maintenance agreement, and I guess.
Of the, of which, the road or the wastewater?
The road.
Okay.
And is it, is it my, is it, am I correct in saying that the, the maintenance agreement of the road would also encumber the neighbor property owners like Mr. Spicer, Mr. Cad for future, if they sold their property to like a commercial business?
We can answer that. Yeah, so within that easement information, the easement information that's in the document, future commercial users would have an obligation to contribute to the maintenance of that road. As their current uses, no, they have, they would have nothing to do that, but if there's a commercial connects to the road, then they would have an obligation to contribute proportionally based on their traffic to future maintenance of that road.
Is that something that's, is that something that's typical? Because now we're encumbering their ability to sell their property, or maybe, you know, maybe that's not a big deal, they'd be able to sell their property to a commercial entity.
I think that's what they want to do. I think that's what their desire is to sell, I mean, I'm not gonna speak for them, but that's what they told us, they mentioned publicly.
I see. But if they sold to a, a, just another individual, then, then that would not apply.
Who wanted to live in the house, nothing, yeah, who wanted to live in the house, that would not apply.
The other thing, so, okay, the.
Do you want to take a sectionary section then?
Well, I just wanna, yeah, I want, well, I just wanna make sure we covered the things that people wanted to, because we had a couple of benefits, sustainability, the wastewater treatment, easement, health facilities, health facility questions.
I would just take, I just wanted to kind of make a comment about the the benefits that we listed by, is it Mr. Johnson? That we listed. Okay, here we go. So management practices regarding stormwater system, I'm not so sure that's a benefit. We would expect that to happen, okay? And taxes, you pay those, that's not, I mean, that, that goes without saying, that's not what we consider benefits to the community, but I, you know, I just wanted to, to make that point.
And I think Commissioner Human has.
Well, yes, I was gonna, I had a question about the commercial properties, because I heard that mentioned a couple of times now. Are these, are those included, this allowing for commercial properties included in this PUD? Or is that something that would have to come back?
They're actually zoned as, what was it, highway? Yeah, they're.
They have a commercial designation of substance.
Yeah.
The property is adjacent to the one, to this one right here.
Right, they're, so they're residentially used right now, and they're zoned.
C4.
C3.
Gotcha, thank you. Okay, I have another broad topic consideration though.
Go ahead.
Maybe you've already discussed this, but location, it seems kind of like an island of density. If it, if it were built there, it looks like just a bunch of, those two truck stops and it's a couple of houses, some small houses. So it seems like it'd be a very dense development for the area, but the, my main concern is how do people get around this facility without a car? Are we requiring cars for people to live in this place? It seems like, I mean, I feel like the answer is yes, it's almost a rhetorical question, but I mean, is there bus service there? Is there, there's no sidewalk, I just looked it up on Google Map, I know it's pretty terrifying to walk on a road like that.
Yeah, there are a couple, there are a couple of things. One is, most senior facilities have shuttles that they actually, that, that's typically a part of their.
Is that a variation?
And we don't know anything about that. But, go ahead.
Just to clarify, how about the senior facility? Trilogy has a transportation component to their operations, but we've also had through that discussions with WAVE to potentially service the project as well.
I think that they would, they would already be in the service area of WAVE, like some of the door-to-door senior.
So WAVE does serve, would, would serve the area.
And, and in our, and one of the things that we did prior to our master plan and so forth is we talked to the city of Dexter, you know, about this and, you know, the density. Because this was actually, it's been in process for, I don't know, a long time. And one of the things that they commented on it was having a little bit more density along Baker Road is helpful because they would love to have more regular service from Dexter to Jackson and Indiana River. And actually, by having some density there, that really helps to, you know, kind of have, you know, stops along and then hit Jackson and, and then into Ann Arbor. So that was from a transportation standpoint, they saw that as a positive thing.
Well, that's table.
That's how they saw it. Yes, Commissioner Hyde?
In the master deed agreement, in section six, I believe, if I got my nose right, there's no right to public access, and I believe, is what it says. And does that include the path easement that you're setting in on the eastern side?
That item has not been addressed in the document yet, but it will be.
Okay, so you still.
Definitely public access. I just wanted to point out that it right now says, there's nothing.
We're in the process of drafting, yeah, legal description for the easement too as well.
Did I follow that correctly, the main entrance into this facility?
No, there is a pathway that goes from the Baker Road entrance to the, to Marshall Road, and it goes along the Boulevard and then up through the east edge of the properties and then out to the road. And it's intended to allow public access around the corner, you know, to turn the corner. And that would potentially get people down to the Jackson Road sidewalks. It's a tough call to say that it's finished at that point.
Yeah, that was.
And they do have it on the draw, on the draw in.
Yeah, the access route.
Oh, no, the pathway. And they set out an easement, but they haven't allowed the public.
So just to follow up on that question, Commissioner Hyde? Will the developer then install the pathway and maintain the pathway?
Yes.
So we, okay.
And I think it's all talked about, the design, I mean.
So, all right. So I think the motion would be, well, entertain a motion, most likely to table. And so we can get some more specifics on some of the. And so we can get some more specifics on some of the, um, the health, it'd be nice to get some specifics on the health. Um, uh, also define a little bit, I think that we're asking, by the time it goes to trustees, to have, um, that, the public benefit agreement with actual dollar amounts and so forth, so that needs to kind of get flushed out. And then, um.
All the items in the planner's review.
Right.
All the items in the engineer's review.
And then, um. Yeah.
So I'd like to make a remark of my.
Yes.
Okay, so in the preliminary PUD supplemental, I, uh, voted to not approve the preliminary PUD, and I would be voting, my thoughts are gonna be the same, um, I think that this project is contrary to the rural nature of that area. I've said that before, and I feel like it needs to be said again, and now we're talking about, now we gotta build, you know, we're, we're planning on easements for commercial use next door and all that, which continual buildup and urbanization of that area. Um, so, I've, I've made these remarks before, I mean, I don't think Mr. Human, Commissioner Human has had the benefit of hearing my words, but, um, about it, um, I know I'm in the minority, and obviously, I'm obviously in the minority with the board of trustees, but, um, I do not believe that this project is, is good for the, in that area, for this community, for the reasons I've stated before. I think it's too big, I think it's too, too much for that small area, it's gonna create more traffic, it's gonna create bigger, widening that road, and then possibly more commercial development. Um, I don't consider that, keep maintaining the rural nature, like the master plan also talks about, uh, of that area. I also wanted to say that I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to intercede, like we did in the Heron Farms, um, project, where some of the commissioners got together with some of the neighbors, and in this instance, it would be some of the commissioners have a subcommittee with some of the neighbors, as well as the, um, the, um, I forgot the name of the Heritage Woods folks, to try to resolve this problem about the, the easement. Um, it sounds like some efforts were made on the part of Mr. Johnson, as well as Eagle, to, um, reach out to Mr. Spicer, Mr. Cad, DOT, I'm sorry, uh, DOT, um, and that was not fruitful. So, um, I throw that out there as an idea, we've done that before with this, another project that was quite controversial for many reasons, and, and with lots of neighbors that had concerns with regard to the Heron Farms, and we're able to resolve, to facilitate some resolution. I mean, we're not, we're not magicians, we can't make it all right, you know, I think, uh, Jim Fink made some good points about the right of way that M, uh, MDOT has, um, which creates another wrinkle there, but I, I, I throw that out there for commissioners to digest, think about, to help bring people to the table to work through some stuff, so you gotta go to the table, ladies and gentlemen, to work out anything.
We're waiting for some cash.
Some cash?
Well, they just gotta give us some money.
No, I'm just talking about the easement, coming to the table to talk about the easement and making, and resolving such that, not cash. But anyway, maybe that's not a good idea, maybe it's not workable, maybe it's too late, but it's not about the time, I have many projects that come to us, where we spend many hours and many years, and there's, you know, some of them are very controversial, some of them are less so. So, I appreciate, uh, Mr. Johnson, about the time that you've had to spend, but, you know, when you're dealing with people, and, you know, there's multiplicity of opinions and stuff, so, um, I just offer that as an idea. But I would definitely be in favor of tabling it, obviously, uh, our planner has recommended that, our engineer has recommended that, based on some of their, their list of concerns they want addressed, but what's dangling out there, um, I'm always one to think about the community and the neighbors, I'm not the only one, I'm trying to be exclusionary, but, and, and, and where we can, um, we can help neighbors and developers resolve things. We were able to do that on a project, I don't know if that's possible, or people are willing, but that's what, why I brought, threw that out there, to think about.
And also a volunteer? Try?
I would, I'm with you.
I, I think it, it makes sense to try. All right.
If we'd like to put into the tabling, uh, the consideration, if you would like to see design of it as well. Is there part of power, for me?
I thi- I think we wanna see, I think, I don't think the design is completed yet.
No, I understand.
Yeah, so I think we need to.
Before it goes to the.
Before it goes to the.
Yeah, I think, I think part of that is, could we list all of the township's, uh, standards for the wastewater treatment ordinance that have to be addressed, and I think O'Leary Jones does as well, so I think that's, part of that's covered in our comments, in O'Leary Jones' comments.
So, yeah, I think we can, um, basically say, addressing the comments and the, um, it, it, I think it's just more specis- specificity.
Specificity?
Yes, specificity, um, of, of, you know, the sustainability pieces, and also, um, learning more about that health facility in, in detail. Okay. All right, all right.
You looking for a motion?
I am.
Move to table?
Based on those items.
Yeah.
Well, based upon, um, the Carlisle-Wortman memo, uh, and the, um, the OMH.
OHM.
OHM memo, where they had various, uh, multiple recommendations that be reviewed before any approval at this stage, as well as all the other things that were brought up today, or many things that were brought up today and discussed.
Yeah, which is really, and the comments discussed tonight by the planning commission.
And as far as the other letter we have in our files, the question, question of her.
And the concerns of.
And.
Your water should come through.
Right, your, your water should come through, and then, I think, um, and then we'll, um, work to convene at least one, um, meeting with the, the parties around the access, and try and facilitate.
With toward convening.
And I see.
Do we have Mr. Spicer, Mr. Cad's info, to be able to contact them?
Oh, would you like to? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yes, you've got my email.
Well, Mr. Johnson does.
Okay.
I would second that.
Okay, it was a motion, okay, bye. Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde, um, and, uh, is there further discussion on the motion? All right, then, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hyde?
Yes.
Commissioner whom?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Shing, yes, Commissioner Colvinson?
Yes. Thank you very much. Presentation and lots of discussion.
Thanks for keeping us company, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah.
Well, I like the two stories, don't, don't think it didn't get unnoticed, thank you.
She liked the two story rather than the three.
I almost fell off my chair, I wanted to say, what happened?
Yeah, and wrapped in square footage.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Wrapped in square footage, a lot more percent wise than it dropped in Bedtown. So, I was glad to hear that this is a standard design.
And, and a part of that is the, as you reduce the amount of, um, independent living, there's more programmed space and required space for specific things, as opposed to, um, you know, large amenities.
So, did you just say that the, uh, areas outside of the actual room?
There's a minimum amount.
Right, so I would have thought that the number of rooms would have dropped, and the square footage wouldn't have dropped just much.
You have to look, you have to look at.
I know, it just surprised me, so, like I said, I was glad to hear it's two.
Yeah, okay, um, we're moving on to our, um, history reports, so. As, as I, and it says I was looking at it, and I go, oh, I forgot to, uh, introduce you to the DDA.
I think it's in the email.
Yeah, I did.
I haven't responded yet.
And I noticed I copied the will, because he's on it, so. So, we don't have anything from the DDA, uh, tab?
Okay, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Uh, there is, do you wanna say something about the signup that you can do? You can, um, sign up for notifications and to, they have some sort of perks.
Can you do that yet? Because it hasn't, as far as I knew, it hadn't been finalized, it's been talked about, there, in the past, being. That we were going to, um, there's going to be a, a method to sign up for, what is it called, first? No, did I bring the right notebook? No, there's, um, Thursdays, cleanup Thursdays, or something like that, where they're going to be, uh, looking for volunteers. So, whether it's out there on the website yet or not, I'm not sure, uh, but it's talked about, so thank you. Um, and they'll be looking for people to sign up for, uh, helping with cleanups, uh, helping with path clearing, helping with, uh, well, all sorts of things that need to be done at all the reserves and parks, so, yep, that, that's in the offing. And if it is on the website, I just haven't gotten it, that may be where you saw it.
I think I got an email. Maybe I was supposed to forward to you guys, but I thought it went to commissions. Maybe not, okay, anyway, yes.
I have a question for the, the parks person sitting next to me. The Marshall Park, the shelters, is there shea- sheathing underneath the planks?
No.
Of the roof? I didn't think so, I thought I could see through that, is, how does that make sense if it rains or something?
Right now, there's a question of whether they were built to the plans, correct, that's being looked into. So, there are, I mean, as part of the process, Tuvan Jones, uh, who's the engineering consultant on that, um, and that's being done by our, our project director.
So, folks are aware of it?
Yep, yep, and also, other details about it, and there will be, there'll be benches, or picking tables underneath that are, would be part of that, and we want them to stay, we want it to be relatively.
Yeah.
Protected in case of rain, but it's obvious, it's not going to be like a park structure, like a Delhi Park, where you've got 20 tables underneath and you just move to the center, because the edges are gonna get wet in a rainstorm. This is just gonna have one picking table under each one, so.
Yeah, but you.
We do intend to.
I think so.
To shed rain, yes, we do intend to, we're aware of it. It's not done.
I think it would help to, to, if you had the sheathing underneath, I think it would help to, to, um, solidify the mounting of the boards, too. And just extra, just extra support.
Okay, let's.
Sorry.
Continue on, yeah, um, do you have anything, um, what has, do you have anything that's gonna be submitted that we should know about?
Uh, nothing submitted, but I, I, I spoke to, we had a resident meeting on the 20th with, uh, some folks from Parkers Grove, or the, um, about Arvers Grove, uh, from the Park, uh, Parkwood Condo.
Condos.
Right next door, there's a, um, resident group that basically is the homeowner association group, where they've hired an attorney, and an engineer, and a wetland consultant to look at the plan, and, uh, we had a Zoom call with myself, Parkwood folks, and all, but their, their consultants and attorney, and OHM was on the call. We were on the call, of course, and, um, went over the, the recently submitted plan, and we're talking about the various issues that are still outstanding, so that, um, it continues to go through the review process, so we will see that within probably the next month or so, uh, actually, you may not see, the, the next step is on the township board, right? So, technically, it's going on the township board, unless the township board is to refer it back to the planning commission. It might, that's the only way it'll come back to the planning commission.
That's been suggested by the public, has that actually been talked about by the board of trustees doing that?
I, I don't know, I haven't heard, yeah, but that, in, in theory, the township board could do that, but that would be up to the township board to do.
And, and can I ask you a question about that?
Yeah.
I know that you have done some research to, to determine how those, that Parkwood development happened, like it wouldn't happen under our current zoning. Were you able to explain that to those residents? That did come up.
I think, I think it did come up, that they're wetland consultants, and they're, they're aware that a lot of the Parkwood condo area is in a, either floodplain or wetland area, that today would have been flagged, you know, I mean, it, it would likely be very difficult to develop the Parkwood condo project if it came to us today, due, due to, you know, wetland ordinance and other, yeah, that, that was approved, I think, in the eighties, and, uh, there, there either were very few, or regulations approved regarding to those sorts of things. So, and we found the plans, and they're not real detailed.
Yeah, and it was before the county review in earths.
Yeah, and really before we had detailed engineering standards, I don't think we had very detailed engineering standards. So, but, I, I would say overall, it's a very positive meeting, um, and, uh, we'll move on. Now, just to be clear, there's, these folks, this is the Parkwood Owner Association officers, and so on and so forth. Uh, they are negotiating with the Arvers Grove people, Arvers Grove developer, with regard to drainage issues and things like that, trying to negotiate easement. They, there are others at Parkwood that aren't on board with this idea of negotiating with, at least that's my impression, with the Arvers Grove. But this meeting I had on the 20th was with more of the actual officials of the Parkwood Condo Association, who, uh, are trying to work with the Parkers Grove developer to make the drainage situation more positive than it is right now. So, now, does everyone in Parkwood agree with that? No, I don't think they do, you can tell if you ever go to a township board meeting, there are several people that show up. If you're not part of the meeting, I was at the 20th, that objected us, but there are a group within Arvers, within the Parkwood Condo Association that are trying to make the best, uh, best case situation, and can occur from this development. And then we, uh, we also met with, uh, today, let's see, we have meeting. Or two kind of pre. or two kind of pre-abs, say, oh, the Knights of Columbus, another somewhat controversial project. We met this afternoon with the representatives who are trying to develop the Knights of Columbus property. They are still interested in developing, and they're kind of moving forward. We will probably see a revised plan from them sooner or later. They're, at this point, they have a consideration of extending municipal water from Jackson Road underneath I-94 to service this site. And they are considering that one of their public benefits to provide clean drinking water to not only their site, but the potential for others within that area. There were a number of us at that meeting discussing these items with them. And we also met today on the Nickle, the old Nicholson Honda site, which was rezoned recently from C4 to I-1, and that's down in the Southside of Jackson Meister, part of it.
Vacant property.
What's that?
It's vacant property. Being used by Nicholson to store hot motorcycles.
Yeah, I say Nicholson because a lot of people remember that site as the old Nicholson Honda site, but it's vacant now. There's nothing on it. It's just a vacant site. And they are proposing a climate control self-storage facility, is what they're planning.
An additional one?
This is the, this is the site plan for the rezoning that was done, where they, you asked specifically what they're.
So that is specifically what they want. They don't want to do anything else, but that's what they want to do. And that's another one where they're early, early on. We probably won't see a site plan for that for a couple months, I'd say a couple, two, three months.
Has anyone contacted us about Lithia? The car dealership?
No, no, for what?
For what?
The car dealership. Either the
The Suburbans site.
The Lithia Motors, the three that had the car charging and stuff. Would you check in with Doug and just see if anything's?
I could check in with their designer.
Okay, that'd be great. Just to know.
What's coming.
Yeah, or if it.
When's it coming?
Yeah.
Yeah, but other than that, nothing specific.
Yeah, and the, do you want to report on the board of trustees?
Yeah, I would be glad to. Just for our commissions purposes, everybody would be happy to know that the pickleball was approved, and Heron Farms' conditional approval was granted, and Crossroads PUD was approved. So all three of those were in agreement with what we.
So pickleball, Crossroads, and what was the other one?
Heron Farms' conditional use.
Okay.
That was a real recent worry.
Yeah. Okay, so let's see. Just a couple things. I do want to get some meetings so we can do the, keep moving on the PUD. Ideally, what I'd like to see is, Doug, if you think we can do this, is the PUD revisions, the EV charging. I'm trying to think of the, I think one thing that wasn't in the PUD that I thought would be helpful is with the PUD that I think Ann Arbor has this in theirs, where the developers required to meet ahead of time when they're developing the plans before it comes with residents.
Are you talking about a pre-submission meeting? Because yes, we do have pre-submission meetings with Oliver and Oliver.
No, I mean with the residents. There's a
So, stash stays out of them, but they are required and assists participation. It depends on the size of the project, so they either have a neighborhood meeting where they have to notify them. We have a list of standards which qualifies for which. Yes, that is required.
Yeah, because I think that would be really helpful for certain size developments and PUDs and things like that, you know. And so, as we're updating that PUD ordinance, we should think about too.
It's not just PUDs, period. Not necessarily the size of it.
Oh, because of the.
Say, say you've got one on, it's a Columbus property. People around would like to know. I mean, it's obvious people would like.
Yeah, and I don't know if we have a, you know, if we can think about a timeline and and, because there was the EV, EV charging. I'm just trying to think of more of the sustainability easier than that, because it would be good to get that rolling, because it has to go to, it has to go public hearing. Recommendation for a pro player, and then go to the state.
I'd be happy to meet with you or just telephone call next week, just to kind of.
Okay, yeah, and.
You're talking about the, on the zoning ordinance amendment committee?
Eventually, yeah. I just wanted to, maybe just, maybe you and I should touch base.
Yeah, and then just kind of get that, what that package looks like and just some kind of timeline, so we can get moving.
Does that include the I don't know what to call it, tree reuse or wood reuse? Would that be a separate ordinance, or would that be part of?
Probably part of, if we're.
Yeah.
Okay. So is, is that a consideration for revision, or is it a rewrite, or how are we doing?
We did have the tree preservation as one of those line items that we were looking at, so.
The tree preservation, yes.
But that would, that would come into it from a, you know, if you're cutting down the trees, you're not only planting, but what you're doing with those trees that you cut down, so that could be part of that.
So that ought to be part of that discussion. Good.
All right, so, yeah, well, Doug and I will work on that, what that sustainability package is and try and get it moving. Exactly. Okay, and then, yeah, all right. Any other? OHM, anything you want to report on?
A couple of things in good news. We've had a couple of meetings with Anna Cohn, the new Parks and Pathway Project Manager. We're getting her up to speed. She's really excited. We're really excited to work with her. So that should move forward. And then two projects have been completed. The sanitary sewer air release valve along Jackson is done and came in under budget. And Z Phase Four is wrapping up and is also under budget. We have a few punchless items and a couple minor erosion repairs to do. But other than that, those two projects are looking good. And then Liberty Road Water Main Phase Two, prep work for that is underway, and it's looking like they'll actually start laying pipe in early November.
Okay, all right. Oh, then the, I sent out a, an email about the fire department wanting a representative to be on that group, and I wanted to just see if anyone was, it's basically to, it's a committee looking at the service and response times and so forth, and they wanted a member of the planning commission who could, you know, kind of be a part of that conversation, knowing what the certain developments and sort of, you know, the map, looking at the master plan and so forth.
Do they say how often they're going to be?
I think it's a specific project, that they're, they're looking at analyzing these response times. It probably has to do with, you know, looking at budgets ahead of time, millage, you know, just, I don't know if it has to do with you know, the fire millage, and, you know, we've purchased property now for that, the second fire station. Because we had, I think they did, they had a consultant come in, and so I'm not exactly sure.
So it might be a short period of time, but intense, or it might be periodic, but you're not sure.
Yeah, do you want me to find out more and email you guys?
Well, when are they going to start?
We're all anxious to get on another committee.
Yeah, I know, but it's like.
Well, I would leave it to others to volunteer, but if they didn't, I would go on. So I would take the number two position. At this point, if they look for a number one.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Commissioner Moore take the lead on this.
No, I'm not leading anything.
I'm facilitating.
What?
The discussion with the Boulevard.
Well, you're good at that. I'm your sidekick. Facilitation. I'm dope.
Okay.
Does anyone else have an interest in assisting with the fire department? Okay, I guess you got it.
Thank you very much. All right. Anything else? We should do the minutes, and then I think we're done.
This is the one where we reviewed the PUD. We have the Nicholson.
So we're coming up on, on our third year, 2023?
There is that, too.
But I did notice that the bylaws say that we can't leave until our position's been replaced.
Well, which reminds me, we have a couple bylaw revisions to work out, too. They're just, they're minor ones.
Are you gonna like have one in there where I can't talk much?
If there's ever a Commissioner Moore, you know, all commissioners have to make the, in the two minute. Sorry. You know, it's really nice to be able to concentrate on one, when it's a big project like this. It really is. It's almost a luxury.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone?
I would move to approve the minutes. I have no corrections submitted.
Okay. There's support for that.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hyde, supported by Commissioner Heman, to adopt the minutes as. Any further discussion? You have one thing?
I have members of the public that's raising this hand.
Oh.
Pardon me?
Okay. A public is raising their hand.
Yeah, I know. I'd like to go up to us. Is that before we finish this vote, or?
Oh, I'm sorry, are we voting? I thought you were about to ready to close.
Oh, we're voting on the minutes.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved.
I have no objection to hearing any others.
And then, okay, then we'll open the public comments.
Don't tell my neighbor.
All right, Mr. Patterson, you have the floor.
I thank you once again for letting the public speak at the end of this meeting. I would just like to suggest that you had three or four, or possibly six people there tonight who were the neighbors of this project, and they clearly had some input. It would earn this committee some goodwill if you had some flexibility and gave them some grace in terms of letting them address the board and letting them feel, at the very least, feel heard. And in those terms, perhaps it would be a good idea for this committee to put a public comment period at the end of the meeting, so that you can get immediate feedback from topics you've discussed that evening. Thank you very much for letting me speak again.
Thank you.
I have no objection.
Is there anyone else? Okay, then I'll.
I would like to consider that.
Okay.
And then vote on it tonight. That's where you.
And vote on it. Yeah, well, actually, I was gonna close public comment and then.
Oh, great.
Yeah.
We didn't actually open it.
Well, I, I just opened it, but it takes everybody to close it.
I see, I see.
Yeah, I mean, if there's agreement, I can just open it, but we need, to close it, we have to vote.
Gotcha.
I did want to address that.
Yeah.
I know that back and forth is not encouraged, but Rob, I wanted to say, if you didn't gather, we are intending to set up a dialogue of whatever magnitude we can with the neighbors and, and see what can come of that. So we definitely hear what you're saying, and we agree with it.
Thank you. Then I'll entertain a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Moore, supported by Commissioner Hyde. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, public comment is closed at 10:06. All right, and then, I mean, I don't think we need, is it, I mean, I don't have any problem with consensus adding, if you want to add a public comment.
Is that in your bylaws?
Yeah, I was gonna say, do we have to do it in order or the meeting might be the bylaws?
We'll check it, and if, how about if we do this? If, we'll check it if it's in the bylaws, then we have to include it, and that, we can always do a formal one until then. If we don't have to, we could add it. What do you think?
So I'm just gonna say this, the reason I asked to be able to think about it and talk about it later is because I think I think it's important to consider what that allows. I agree with Mr. Patterson. The opportunity for people to weigh in after they heard things, but on the other hand, you know, some of these the systems are in place and the way we handle our meeting so that things don't get out of hand, and so that discussions and topics and the agenda moves along in an expeditious way, even though that doesn't always happen. So I would be concerned about, I mean, we have been pretty lenient about reopening public comment. We've been we've even been lenient in terms of some dialogue, which we're not, that's not really how our meetings should go. Having some dialogue between the public. So I guess in some ways, I'd like to leave it the way it is because of those things that I mentioned. I don't know if I'm making any sense. It's a little late and I'm getting tired, but I'm all about inclusion and people participating, but I do think there's some room for us to be able to control the meeting so that we can get things done. So that's, that's why I was asking that we really give it some consideration and not really make a decision today, but that's just me, if other people are ready to vote.
Can I ask, Doug, how many members of the public are still in attendance? Because I'd like to point out the number in, in the room. It might not be that much discussion.
No, there's, there's, well, I, right now, there's like two, three other people other than staff and engineers to turn it over. So there's three people. However, I, you know, Commissioner Moore has a good point that you know, you guys, you're not the township board, and you have to have time and room within your meeting to deliberate and make decisions, and I think it's worth a good thoughtful discussion before you jump into adding public comment at the end. That could.
You're right, we do have the option of.
And people always have the option of sending emails and communication, and before Zoom, people had to show up in meetings, so.
And we have the option to open it. I mean, we, we're pretty flowing, flexible, if you will, with public time, or public comment time, as well as engagement with the community that's here. So I know that came up in the Arvers Grove, when many, many people showed up, the neighbors, the Parkwood neighbors showed up, and they felt like I've heard criticisms that we have public time here, and then the developer speaks, and then we talk, and we deliberate, and then we move, but they don't have any way to respond to the developer. and then we move, but they don't have any way to respond to the developer. I know that's come up before.
I would agree. That's probably the most meaningful place to add public comment if we're adding a public comment. And I'd also agree that we could probably do a better job of being more orderly when it comes to interacting with the public. After public comment is closed.
Yeah. Well, there's, you know, and we have to also remember there's two different kinds of reviews that we do. And a review like Arbor's Grove, which was just a site plan, while controversial, it was not something that rose to the level of public here. It was, you can say, it's so multifamily, it's a use permitted by right. Technically, if that means all the minimum standards, the township has no choice but to approve it. So at that point, you know, you're relying on us, you're relying on OHM to, to go through our reviews and point out where a project meets or doesn't meet standards. There's no discretion in that, in that part. There are some communities that have opened up a significant amount of site plan review, completely administrative, doesn't go to planning commission at all. So these are not issues where the public, the public's input would be helpful necessarily to the planning commission. Because if they hit out the standards, or a straight site plan, those standards are relatively easily discernible.
Yeah, maybe that was not a good.
Yeah, the township has no, the township has no, you know, authority to deny a use permitted by right that meets all the standards. And so for other uses like special land use, PUD, rezoning, there are, there are required public hearings and the public has the ability, they're notified by mail, it's in the newspaper, they come out, they provide their comments. You know, this, you know, there has to be an orderly way for the planning commission to review items. And we do that. That's what we, that's what we do. That's what we've done for years. Now, on the other extreme, I work in some communities where they make every single site plan a public hearing just, just to gain hope, just to get public comment. You could do that. You could put that in your site plan review. It's not required by state law. But even, you know, regardless of what the public, what their input would, you could change your site plan review process to make everything that comes before is a public hearing. Yeah, now, I wouldn't recommend that, but that is something you could do.
I mean, there, there's, so I think there's, there's a, I mean, I understood Mr. Patterson's remarks and why he brought it up because I think there's just, you know, putting aside the issue that there's so much going on in our township government right now, let's put that aside for a moment. The idea, if I'm maybe so bold as to interpret Mr. Patterson's remarks, is that it might allow for the community to feel that they've been heard and been a part of. And I, and I'm, and I'm sensitive to that. But I do think that we, we walk on this, my experience in being on this particular commission is that we've exercised a lot of flexibility, keeping in mind that we want to create a venue where people are able to speak to us. So, but anyway, I just.
And I also think, I mean, there is another practice, and I think, you know, it would also be helpful is, it's sometimes if, if the commissioners actually, you know, items that do come up by the public, if there is a way to express that we've heard that, you know, just in our deliberations or, you know, bring up somehow, and maybe think about that, too, how we can do, you know, just to acknowledge that we heard it.
Like somebody repeat the questions to the developer that were brought up in public.
Or, or, yeah, if somewhere, or, yeah, or if, you know.
So that they felt like their question got put on, on the dock?
Yeah, because we have to have some way, I mean, we have to have some protocols to run our meetings. So I just remember that here on, here on Farms, multiple meetings that we had. I remember one guy, he was standing right here. A nice guy, he just was trying to make a point. I didn't feel threatened, but I thought, hmm, we're getting close. I, and I wasn't fearful, but it was way outside of the rules of engagement.
Yeah, I don't know where the tables were at that point, because those are supposed to sort of be the.
Well, it's, it's an indication of a buffer zone, but it really isn't. I think he was from Silo Church community. He was, if I remember correctly, he was thinking of.
Yes, yes, yes. And he was very, you know, he just bring that up as a, as a, as a protocol issue. Right. If somebody wanted to leap across the table, they were afraid to do that.
Yeah, and, and honest to goodness, if, you know, you feel like, because sometimes, you know, I, I tend to be a little more forgiving than, or whatever. So if any of you guys want to bring, all you have to do is say point of order. I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, and that can be our.
You know, this is kind of maybe getting off. We've had people that have spoken on Zoom and have been quite forceful in their personal opinions about Commissioner Kuto, Mr. Luhan. And, you know, we've discussed this a little bit, but, you know, we got a little. We got a little personal, for lack of a better word.
And I have no problem with any of you saying point of order and, you know, that will also help, you know, break that if, if something, you feel like something isn't.
Do you have the ability to override a Zoom speaker? Can you mute them? Okay, so, so number one, that, that might be a practice that we want to consider, is if somebody's becoming abusive, they get silenced and then it gets explained why.
Well, I think there's a, I think there's a protocol for that.
Do we have it written down?
It's in the bylaws.
It, it only happened once in my two years. It's not like it's an ongoing problem.
Because you have to, you have to, you have to.
You have to be the board of trustees.
The chair is supposed to. Yeah, and I'll look at it again, but the chair is supposed to call the person out, you know, kind of out of order, give them a warning.
Good.
And then go for.
And that's in our bylaws?
I think, yeah.
I have a question. One moment, the public comment discussion. Is there any time for us to discuss things that are said in the public comment?
Yeah.
There is?
Well, it's, so when the public makes comments, this is how it's supposed to. So we have a public hearing or just public comment at the beginning of the meeting. But let's say a public hearing. We're not supposed to engage the public while they're making comments. So we, if there's 15 people that want to speak, in my opinion, the best way to run that meeting would be to listen to all 15 people. We're not going to address your comments. Thank you for your comment. They sit down, the next person sits up. Somebody's taking notes, me or all of you are taking notes. And at that point, one of you is supposed, the way this is supposed to happen, one of you is supposed to then refer to Jan and say, you know, chairperson, you know, coworkers that, can we address Mr. Smith's comment about the access? And then, and then they will, then Jan will say.
Among us.
Yeah, then, yeah. So you guys are supposed to go through the chair. Then Jan will say, you know, Stacy from OHM, can you address that access question? And then we'll try to address them. And then if we can't, we'll say, you know what, I'm not comfortable addressing that. Let me, next meeting, we'll try to have an answer for it. So trying to engage every single question that's coming to you is not a good practice because, one, you could give a wrong answer. But, you know, we should be taking comment, writing those comments down, and then either try to address it at the next meeting, or if one of you really wants an answer, say, hey, Doug, they had a good point. What do you think about that? Or, you know, ask Jan, and then Jan directs it to remember she's got track of it.
So sometimes I don't hear or understand what the person said. And I've said, what did you say? And is, if that's the case, I would direct that at Jan to ask the person?
Yeah, I mean, for something like that. If you just can't hear, yeah, that's.
Or if it's not clear.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, it, you know, you don't want to get engaged particularly individual, and we're kind of getting into a, a meeting protocols here, but, because I teach this for Michigan Association of Planning. So you don't want, you know, individual planning, you know, the, the conversation between you and the public should not be each one of you having a line to the public. It should be each one of you have a line to Jan. And Jan's a quarterback and she runs how this, who answers what questions. And that is, so it should be the public coming to us, you guys going through Jan, Jan directing how the, how the question gets answered. I mean, that, that should be how it looks.
I can try to work on that.
It's a lie.
No, 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 I don't get it. I'm a people person, so.
Okay, we need to have a motion to, we, we didn't move to adjourn, did we? Okay.
I would make that motion.
Okay. By Commissioner Hyde, supported by Commissioner Human, and we're adjourning at 10:22. Oh, no, we have to vote first. Sorry. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 10:22. Thank you.
Um, require a motion for adjournment?
I would, I would want to.
Is that a public meetings issue?
I, I just, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I don't know. I guess it's too late. I see Julie and Carrie as, I just noticed her hand up. I'm sorry. Can we get an email?
Yeah, have her email.
You're here, I'm a couple now, so here, but if you could email whatever your question or comment is, we'll try to get it.
I can make her, her point, although she can't hear me.
Disagere in the meeting.
No, we're still going.
Yeah, but we adjourned.
She wanted to get the point across that if you.
Recording stopped.
If you move somebody, it's a violation of the First Amendment.
Oh, my God.
Okay. It also said.
That's not true. Then he just said.
I think that requires a number.